Mr. Faria, is that you? Mr. Faria, is that you just, that just dialed in?
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna be in through phone today.
Okay.
Okay, we have everyone online?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. All right. Agenda worksheet, City Council meeting, City Council chambers, five twenty J Street, Los Vannos, California, November fourth, two thousand and twenty at four P M. Temporary public comment and email established for the city of Los Vannos and City Council meetings of November fourth, two thousand and twenty. Emails must be received by four P M. The city has established, enlarge this a little bit. And there we go. The city has established a temporary email address citizens can use to email public comments on any agenda item limited to two hundred and fifty words or less. Any public comments received by November fourth, two thousand and twenty prior to four P M will be read aloud during the appropriate time and agenda item. The email address is cityclerk@lostvannos.org. Public comment during public hearings will be taken in real time via email. Once a public hearing is open, the City Council will pause the meeting in order to receive emails directed at the public hearing up to two hundred and fifteen words and will read comments into the record after resuming the meeting. As time permits, please indicate that comments are for a particular public hearing by putting "public hearing" in the subject line of the email and the title of the public hearing. Can everyone hear me? Are we broadcasting?
Yes, we are broadcasting.
Okay, fantastic. All right. The City Council chambers are closed to the public. Those interested in viewing the City Council meeting can do so, can do so on the city of Los Vannos website and in it's at YouTube. I'm not going to read the whole email address or the whole address, website address. So at this time, it is exactly four oh three. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Chief, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Of course, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Director Maloney, let's go to item three, roll call.
Faria?
Here.
Johnson Santos?
Here.
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Valalta?
Here, we do have a forum. Let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mayor, Veronica.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Santos, second by Lewis for the approval of the agenda. All in favor? Faria?
Yeah.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Okay, let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council chamber or members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items and speakers are, are may submit their comments by submitting a written statement limited to two hundred and fifty words or less by dropping it off the utility box, payment box at the City Hall at five twenty J Street or by email, by emailing cityclerk@lostvannos.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council meeting. And at this time, Director Maloney, do we have any comments that are non-COVID related?
I have received no comments. COVID or any other comments.
Okay, either COVID or regular comments, we have received none, is that correct?
I have received no comments, zero.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Hearing that, I will now close the public forum. And I will go on, well, there are any callers on that want to make any statements on, at the public hearing. Not hearing any, I will now close the public forum and go on to item six, consideration of approval of agenda, or consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered reroutine and will be voted on in one motion, lest removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two two four two five three through two two four 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 six in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. First quarter investment report for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year. City Council Resolution number six two seven nine. Accepting a grant deed for a twelve-plus square foot area right-of-way dedication along the frontage of fourteen thirty East Pacheco Boulevard and authorizes the city manager to execute all required documents for this dedication acceptance. M M C G D B R, Los Vannos, L L C. Reappointment of Mark Botley to serve a four-year term expiring December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-four as the city's representative on the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to remove item six D as in David.
Okay. Would you, is there any other council members who would like to remove any items? If not, Mrs. Lewis, would you make the motion, please?
Yes, I will. I'd like to approve the consent agenda as submitted minus letter D.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that, miss. I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Lewis for the approval of the consent agenda, minus item D. And a second by Santos. Faria?
Yeah.
Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to make a comment in regards to Mr. Botley's years of service to our community, being forty-three years as a representative on, on this mosquito abatement board and his continual interest in serving on this board. And I just wanted to make a public thank you to him for reaching out and wanting to do this. Forty-three years is a long time to be a volunteer, public servant, but he's still willing to work on that board, so congratulations to Mr. Botley.
Thank you, I would second that, thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Okay, I'll need a motion by you, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item six D on the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos for the, for the approval of item six D on the consent agenda? All in favor? Faria?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Okay, let's go on to item seven, public hearing. If you challenge or propose action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item seven A, to receive public comment and consideration of establishing a vacant building registration monitoring fee. Item seven A one, City Council Resolution number six two eight zero, establishing a vacant billion, building registration monitoring fee. And we're gonna go to Director Elms on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I do have a short PowerPoint presentation for this item. Go to the next slide. Just a bit of background on this particular item. This item came about from a presentation that was presented to the City Council on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. At that City Council meeting, the council directed staff to review the existing vacant and boarded buildings ordinance. It was at that meeting that we did a presentation of an update of the downtown. This was, it covered many topics, one which did cover vacant and boarded buildings, which we stated we would come back with an analysis of our existing ordinance and the establishment of a monitoring fee. So staff has analyzed the existing ordinance and has developed an implementation strategy based on our existing ordinance on the book. This particular ordinance is number one zero five nine. It was adopted back in December of two thousand and seven. It is attached to the staff report. It does define what a vacant and boarded buildings are and what those definitions are. It establishes the time period for maintenance and annual monitoring fee. However, that monitoring fee, according to this ordinance, needs to be established by a resolution and the city has not adopted a monitoring fee. And so that is what we are bringing forward to you tonight. Next slide. So with ordinance number one zero five nine, our existing ordinance that we have on the book, we've developed an implementation strategy. We do fill, staff fills, and has determined that this existing ordinance has the necessary framework to regulate public nuisances and hold property owners accountable. So what we would be doing is implementing through a registration process. We would be using that hand in hand with the nuisance sections of the municipal code. And we would use the registration as a baseline so that we can educate property owners. We would have contact information, property management information to hold those responsible accountable when nuisances occur. And we would be able to recoup costs associated with monitoring those nuisance properties. The registration form would require owner information. It would provide direct mailing information. Typically, our information that we receive is from the county assessor's office, which is just tax roll information. So sometimes the taxes are being mailed to an accountant or some other address and it's not getting to the property owner. So this will give us the information that we need and the contact information, as well as telephone number, the right mailing address, the right email address so that we can keep in contact with those that are responsible for the property. And it would give us the local property maintenance company who's responsible for security, maintenance, and marketing of the property. And the registrations would be processed through the Community and Economic Development Department. I do want to stress that the registration process as in accordance with ordinance one zero five nine would just be a baseline, like I said, to educate property owners, hold them accountable. But we would be using other tools in our municipal code, the nuisance sections of the code to be able to still administer administrative citations when those properties are in violation of public nuisances. Next slide. So fiscal impact, staff is proposing to establish a registration and monitoring fee of three hundred and sixteen dollars, excuse me, it's three hundred and twelve dollars with the typo, and eighty-six cents. This would be an annual fee. So the property owner would be required to register annually and have to pay that fee. This allows, the purpose of this is so that staff can track, the city can track those properties. We can gather an inventory of, of the vacant properties. We can monitor, we would be monitoring. And then it would allow us to be able to educate those property owners as well. Like I said, to hold them accountable on, on the city's expectations. Properties that are found in distress and a public nuisance would still be subject to administrative citations in addition to the registration and monitoring fee. So that would not stop, we would just use this, like I said, hand in hand. It would be an additional tool to be used with admin citation. And it'd be a reminder to those property owners that they are negligent, that they do have property here in Los Vannos, that they are going to be held accountable for. Next slide. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution number six two eight zero to establish a vacant building registration and monitoring fee. Simply tonight, we are just asking to establish the fee as we feel we, like I said, we have the framework to be able to implement the ordinance. We just need the monitoring fee to be able to really run through the process. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions, Director Elms?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Mrs. Santos, go ahead.
Um, I, I do apologize if I missed this, and sorry about that, Councilmember Lewis. How long does a building, building need to be vacant before we're looking into something like this?
So the definition of a vacant and boarded building, a vacant building is sixty days. So if the building stands vacant for more than sixty days, they need to follow the process.
That is all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, yes, Stacy. Could you let the council know whether or not this is just gonna apply to commercial buildings or is this registration gonna also apply to residential rentals as well?
Great, great question. Yes, this particular program does apply to residential and non-residential properties. So commercial and residential properties would are subject to this existing ordinance and would be subject to the registration process. Through our research, we found in other cities that this tool is actually very useful, particularly in the residential sections, that they're able to hold those vacant properties, those owners accountable.
Okay, and does the property, the residential property have to be vacant or can it be occupied and out of compliance as far as our city ordinances and codes are concerned?
So to implement in, in, in this particular ordinance, one zero five nine, it would have to be vacant. It's, it does apply to a vacant building. If it is occupied and a public nuisance, it would fall under the nuisance section of the municipal code.
Okay. Well, just as a side comment, I think Councilmember Jones had brought this up at one time about registration fees for residential homes that are occupied in order to help keep them in compliance when they become nuisance and therefore have a way of directing the issues and the problems to the owner of the property. That might be something this council needs to look into at a, at a future date, you know, coming up soon to another tool to help us with residents that are just not being kept up well in our community. Outside of just putting the pressure on code enforcement all the time to go out, out and do stuff to help the owner of the property, help get their tenants in compliance with what we would like to see in our city. That's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes, and, and Director Elms is gonna have an answer for you on, with, for that question. Plus, that's on my project list for tonight, residential home inspection, too. So I, I believe that's already in the works.
Thank you.
Director Elms, I have a couple of questions here.
Go ahead.
The, the fee for a vacant building, let's just say specifically a commercial building, say one of our vacant buildings that we have downtown. So I see on the, on the agenda here, it's three hundred and twelve dollars a year. For that, that's like, what, twenty-six dollars a month? I'm wondering if that might be a little low, because I know if I had some commercial property, that would cost a couple hundred thousand to take care of. I would pay five years in advance, just not to have to do anything. I mean, it, it's a very low fee. For, for residential, that's a different story, but for the commercial, especially some of our target areas like downtown, that, that does seem a little on the low side. So I wanna know if we're gonna have, if we can adjust the, the fees at all? Or what's your guys' thoughts behind that? Just how'd you guys come to that conclusion?
Sure, so we did calculate the fee using an average hourly rate, and this was purely just for the registration. So just putting the database, you know, putting that property into the database, having Community and Economic Development Department involved and code enforcement, really those two departments involved. And using that as the baseline. Any type of visits by, additional visits by code enforcement or any inspections by the fire department or the building department would then be charged to the property through admin citation. So we did feel that using the registration purely establishing this fee as, and using average hourly rate to be able to get to that, we felt that this was acceptable. The, the city, we, so it'd be unlawful for us to overcharge a property owner. So we're really trying to, to get, you know, kind of a very specific average of where we thought this time would be. So this, like I said, is a baseline. Any type of additional cost the city would incur, we would be able to collect through admin citation when we're having to make multiple trips and having to address those properties that are, that are nuisances.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Director Elms?
Mr. Mayor, if I could add that I, that the team that put this all together, obviously it was not myself in a bubble or in a vacuum. The team consisted of our fire chief, Mason Hurley, our police chief, Gary Breezy, and our city attorney, Mr. Bond. We collectively sat down as, as a task force to really, to, to analyze and determine what was the best route to implement this existing ordinance and how we could strategically be able to process this. We were able to come up with a solution that would fit into really our existing processes now. We do registrations for, for many things, whether it's, you know, garage sales or temporary uses. So we, we do feel that this particular strategy will fall into line seamlessly through our existing processes.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff, or excuse me, from, from council? All right.
None here.
Okay, there's a, a, there's a public hearing portion to this. So I will now open up the public hearing on City Council Resolution number six two eight zero. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? This is, Director Maloney, do we have any comments?
I have received zero comments.
Thank you, and is there anyone online who would like to comment? Not hearing anyone and, and not receiving any comments via Director Maloney. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and what's your pleasure? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Lewis? I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number six two eight zero as read by title.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Faria, I think just edged out Mr. Jones. All right, so I have a motion by Lewis, a second by Faria for the approval of six two eight zero. two eight zero. All in favor, Mr. Fariah?
Yes.
Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Okay, let's go on to item B, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of adopting an ordinance to amend Title Nine to Chapter Three of the Los Angeles Municipal Code regarding agricultural farm worker employee housing. And item B one ordinance number one one eight eight, amending Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Angeles Municipal Code regarding employee housing. And this is a first reading and introduction and we are going to back to Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, City Council. Um, so this particular item is being brought before you, um, as, uh, to bring our zoning code into compliance with the Health and Safety Code of the State of California. Um, this is in respect to employee housing specifically. Um, this amendment is required per our housing element, um, which was adopted back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, implementation program HI, uh, requires that, um, our, um, zoning code, uh, consists of employee housing, that it be, um, consistent with the Health and Safety Code, um, and, um, that we would amend our zoning code to assure compliance. Um, so basically what this particular amendment to the zoning code is doing, it first defines employee housing. Um, it, it defines that, um, definition based on the language that's consistent with the state Health and Safety Code, so we're in compliance with the state. And then it permits and it conditionally permits employee housing. So this would be, um, employee housing is occupied by six or fewer employees and, uh, that would be deemed for single family structures within a residential use the same and be treated just as any other residential use. It's not to be, according to the State of California, employee housing is, um, to be treated the same as every other residential use. So it's needed to be, uh, a use by right in certain zoning districts. Um, so we have a table included for you, um, within the staff report. Um, within the rail corridor, um, it is a permitted use by right for six or fewer employees. Within the single family residential zoning district, R one, the low density residential zoning district, it's a permitted use by right for six or fewer employees. And then a conditional use permit is needed, um, for housing of seven or more employees. For medium density residential, R two, uh, for housing of six or fewer employees, it'd be a use by right. And then we're proposing, um, a conditional use permit for seven or more employees. And then within the R three high density residential zoning district, it's a permitted use for, for seven or more employees, no conditional use permit is needed. And then within the mixed use zoning district, um, it is a permitted use for six or fewer employees and no conditional use permit is permitted. Um, also within this proposed amendment, we are requesting the elimination of crop and tree farming. Um, staff does not feel that this is necessary to keep this, uh, particular, um, um, situation to continue in the code. It's not necessary. Uh, so currently within our low density residential zoning district, we do allow a conditional use permit, um, for, um, crop and tree farming. Um, and we are recommending the elimination of this use as it's incompatible with the R one zone. Um, and in the situation where a newly annexed property is under an agricultural production, um, pending future development, that agricultural use can continue, um, as a non-conforming use as a part of their entitlement, entitlement, um, for that newly annexed property. So, uh, essentially they would be grandfathered and they could continue that use until that use stopped. So it, um, you know, it's staff feels this is an opportunity, um, to, um, take out, to remove that incompatible use within the R one zoning district. So that's also a part of, um, this amendment before you tonight. Under the environmental review, uh, this project, um, is not subject to CECLA as, uh, the project in, is not an activity and the potential for a direct physical change or reasonable foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment is not likely. Um, so with that, staff is requesting that the city council would consider, um, waiving the first reading and introducing, uh, the ordinance to amend Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Angeles Municipal Code regarding employee housing. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Um, let's see, uh, uh, the city council members, are there any comments? Mr. Fariah?
Um, no, I don't have any comments or questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs., Mr. Jones?
No comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, Stacy, um, I, I was looking at some other information of this project, but did you mention anything about, um, uh, if, um, if it's, if the property is grandfathered in and if the property owner ha- has farming on that property, but they stop it? And is there a certain amount of time that goes by where they're not allowed to farm anymore?
So for newly annexed property, uh, they would be grandfathered with their, um, agricultural use, um, until such time that they stop. If they stop for at least a year, they are no longer grandfathered. They can no longer continue that use there. Um, that's typically the clause that we use for, um, any, any grandfathering. Um, so that's why staff felt that it was not necessary. It's inconsistent with the R one zoning district because if it's annexed into the city, it, the thought is that it's developer initiated and that it will be for development. Uh, so it's not needed to, uh, be in agricultural production.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I have no questions. So this is a public hearing. So what I would like to do at this time is open up, uh, uh, the public hearing in reference to, uh, ordinance number one one eight eight, amending Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Angeles Municipal Code regarding employee housing. Director Maloney, do we have any email comments?
I have received zero comments.
Thank you. And is there anyone on the line who would like to comment on this item? One one eight eight. Not hearing anyone. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level and do, and we need two motions here. We need a waiving of the first reading and we need an introduction. So who would like to make that?
Uh, I'll make the motion for the first reading if you'd like.
Go ahead, Mr. Fariah.
Uh, move to waive the first reading of ordinance number one one eight eight as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, Mrs. Santos. It's motion by Fariah, second by Mrs. Santos for the waiving of the first reading of one one eight eight. And Fariah?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Mr. Fariah, go ahead.
I'd like to move to introduce ordinance number one one eight eight as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Fariah, second by Santos for the introduction of one one eight eight. Mr. Fariah?
Yes.
Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Let's go on to item eight, local partnership program, LPP, agreement between Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, and the City of Los Manos for project funding for the Pioneer Road widening project. Item eight A, city council resolution number six two eight one, authorizing the mayor of the City of Los Manos to execute a local partnership program, LPP, agreement with the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, for an LPP funding for Pioneer widening, why Pioneer Road widening project. And we're going to go to, uh, Director Fajian.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good late afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm glad, uh, it's a beautiful day out there. When it gets darker, I'm not sure what to say. Um, tonight, what staff is looking forward on a recommendation is that, um, the city council will adopt the resolution sixty two eighty one that authorizes the mayor to execute a LPP agreement with MCAG and the City of Los Manos for project funding for the Pioneer Road widening project. What this is, is in order to compete in the local partnership program, which is the funds that we're seeking, there has to be an agreement between the local COG, which is the, your local transportation, uh, authority, which is MCAG in this case, and the entity, which is us, who is actually applying for those funds. Uh, my staff report will be brief, but it's, it's basically in three or four different items. At first, we'll be a little, just a real brief description of the project that we've been working on for a while here. It's a, about a six point five mile, four lane arterial with a class one multi-use path. And it goes from State Route one fifty two just east of Los Manos Creek. It's head south to, till it intersects Pioneer Road. Then it goes east to where it intersects Ward and then north to, to San, State Route one fifty two. That is basically the parameters, uh, and that will be, uh, when you, when we go and we do on the November tenth, when we do our, uh, workshop for our, our study session, uh, that will show us the recommended alternatives. So, uh, that's the parameters. A little bit of history on the project and the way I'll do the history is just kind of things that have come before the council and recommendations that we have received to go to work on this project. On December, uh, on December sixth in two thousand and seventeen, the city council did adopt a resolution which included, which included, uh, including the Pioneer Road widening project in the two thousand and eight, two thousand and forty-two regional transportation plan, the R two. This became, uh, one of the, uh, this made it eligible to start competing for regional funds. That was in, uh, in late two thousand and seventeen. On April seventeenth of two thousand and nineteen, the city council adopted another resolution with, which authorized the city to execute the State Route one fifty two and Pioneer specific plans grant agreement with Caltrans. This is the agreement, th- these are the plans that we'll be going over in a workshop on November tenth. And, and it was, it had Pioneer Road very specifically as half of that project. Uh, on May ninth, two thousand and nineteen, we got to, uh, staff got direction from the city council to have the Pioneer Road widening project be included in the two thousand and nineteen Measure V implement, implementation plan. And then it'd be a hundred percent funded by Measure V regional funds through the right of way acquisition phase. And this, uh, and that was done on the night, uh, May ninth, two thousand and nineteen. On November sixth, two thousand and nineteen, the city council did adopt the resolution approving that Measure V regional funding agreement between MCAG and the City of Los Manos. This agreement provides eight point six five billion of Measure V regional funding for the Pioneer Road widening project with some supplemental funds because things have, prices have gone up. Will get us through the right of way stage up to the construction stage. Uh, on February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, uh, we, city council did adopt resolution sixty one eighty four, which allowed the city to go into a professional services agreement with Mark Thomas and Company Incorporated for all the engineering services, services for the Pioneer Road widening project, but specifically for phase one. We were going to go phase, phases at a time. Uh, the phase two, which will be the engineering environmental phase, will probably be become, coming before the council in January or February. So that's the brief history. Um, a little bit of the requirements of this agreement and from MCAG's side, it's that they allocate formula shares in accordance with the Pioneer Road widening project, which was adopted by the MCAG, the MCAG board on November twenty first, two thousand and nineteen. That, uh, staff report is, is in your staff report from MCAG and it says all the different areas that we, that this project was supposed to get, uh, funding in the future and, and, um, what priority level we were with all of them, which most of them, we were on the top of the priority. And the LPP funding is one of those, is one of those, uh, uh, areas that we were supposed to get. And they were supposed, and MCAG staff is supposed to allocate those per that, uh, agreement. MCAG staff actually, um, Matt Fell and Typhim of Sony is actually keeping the staff here very up, uptight, up aware and letting us know when our deadlines is for funding and working very well with ourselves and with our consultant on this issue. The second one is coordinated with the City of Los Manos on project application submittals. There is an LPP application and this agreement with MCG is part of that. We are now working on getting that application submitted, uh, and we have to have this agreement in order to submit it. Uh, monitoring the City of Los Manos for compliance with all LPP and Measure V requirements. It's mainly advertising it, uh, putting it out there on public notice, there's a, taking pictures when the project goes. In design, it's mainly just advertising it. Uh, the city will have to submit a formula program application for an eligible LPP project. We're in the process of doing that right now and this agreement, as I said, will be part of that. Certify that the required match is available and on hand. We're competing for the LPP phase two and phase three application at the moment. Each one of those is six hundred, about six hundred thousand dollars. It's not exactly that, but it, they adjust that when it's actually given. So there's about one point two million between the two phases that will go towards engineering phase and environmental phase. And there is a requirement of fifty percent match of that, so we have to match that at one point two million. We'll match that with other funding and specifically with Measure V regional. That was one of the ideas of having Measure V, uh, Measure V regional money was to go out there and get other money. And this is exact, a really good example of that. Um, we certified that all required match is available and on hand. That'll be part of the application. We've certified that the, uh, request allocation for the CTC, California Transportation Commission, and begin delivery of the project elements in the year of the funds that are programmed. Well, the City of Los Manos will be responsible for any reporting requirements. We will advertise the project on the SB one and Measure V project as an SB one, Measure V project. Place the project on the SB one map and include a picture and follow all rules and regulations of, of these programs. These are all things we have to do with any funding, so there's nothing special or out of the ordinary with this. One thing that I would like to bring up at this time, I, I did get a call from, uh, Mr. Jared Martin of CCID. He's the general manager. Uh, and his, he wanted me to put in public record that this funding isn't towards the construction, this funding is towards the engineering and environmental and we're quite distant away from the construction. Uh, his concern, uh, obviously is the bridge over the main canal and, uh, and he wants to get, be involved in that, the design of it, which he will be. And our design engineer at that point will approach him on this. So I just wanted to put down on record that I did talk to him today, he was occupied and couldn't, and couldn't come before the city council today.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Too fast, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Jared Martin, he's the general manager of CCID, asked me to put on record that these funds are for the design and environmental phase of this project, this proposed project, not for the construction phase. And that our engineer will be working with CCID during the design phase on any bridge widening requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me, go ahead. Okay, you're welcome. Um, so what we're asking for is that we adopt this resolution and so we can, uh, have this agreement signed and it'll be included in our package for LPP funding. And also included in this package, it's very interesting, is our, I had our project engineer, Mark Thomas, put together. Design, actually, all the way through construction, just for the initial funding that's needed. And the second one is project funding by phase and contract. And it's, it's quite interesting. And if you look in, in the MCAG staff report, it will explain what these abbreviations are, CMAC, ATIP and all those. Um, and, and this is following the funding protocol that's, that, uh, MCAG governing board did approve for this project. It's interesting because it does, if we, if we follow this, the ATP, the Active Transportation Program is the one, only one we have to compete with at the moment. It's the hardest one to get. But even if we don't get that, we still end up positive on a couple million to bring forward to the construction phase. Of course, we have to go after construction money, but at least we'll have some, something in that game if we get down the road to that point. Any questions? I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Okay, Mr. Fariah, any questions?
No, not at this time. No, not at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos.
Yes, I do have a question. Oh, there's a bit of an echo. But I have a question about, will we be having more, more resident engagements? The online, the not online?
Well, the resident engagement for the, the planning documents, they can try, of course, call in on, on our workshop and either the Planning Commission or the City Council. But we're getting towards the end of that planning document for State Route 152 and Pioneer. And we are on a strict timeline by the state on those programs, where we have to close them out by the end of January, or we owe the funding, the funds back. On the other, when we go through the environmental stage and all, yes, there will definitely be outreach done at that point again. During the actual design, not a lot of outreach, but during the environmental, there will be outreach at that time. And there probably will be, I mean, we haven't even got, looked that far, but as we roll down the way, and if we get to the point where we have a really good construction documents, 50% or something, I'm sure we can arrange to meet with whoever would like to. Hopefully, it can be in person at that time, and show them what the documents are looking like. All affected property owners definitely are gonna get notified, because there will be right-of-way acquisition issues entirely along the corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yep, a couple of questions here. How much does the city have to match? For this phase?
For which phase?
For this phase here that we're approving, or that we're?
Through, through the design environmental stage, up through the right-of-way acquisition, up through the construction start phase, the only match the city has is some funding that we got back from the RTIF, which is only can be used on Pioneer, because it's the only regional project that's on the RTIF. So that's money we have in our pool, but it can only be used for this project. That's about $800,000 now. And the other match will come from the Measure V Regional Funds. Doesn't come out, none of, it's all money that's out of that fund. There's no local traffic money or local money besides maybe what we got back from the RTIF. But that is only designated for this project. And we didn't have that at all until we got the rebate from MCAG on that. Okay. And if we approve this tonight? I'm sorry. There'll be nothing coming out of our general fund up to this stage at all, and nothing coming out of our, out of our transportation funds. It's all funding that's either from the Measure V Proposition, Measure V Money, or from the money that was set aside from, that came from the bypass project that was earmarked for this project. We also have some earmarked, and it can only be used for this project. So as far as coming out of the, out of the city pool, there really is nothing up through the construction phase.
Okay, so we approve this phase tonight. It does not commit us to construction of this? Is that correct?
Yeah, tonight you're not approving the phase. Tonight, you're approving us going out and giving funding to, to help fund the next phase. I, I, in January or February is actually when we'll be, the staff, public works staff, will be approaching, will be presenting to council. Won't be me, but will be presenting to council an addendum to Mark Thomas's contract, which will actually kick us into the design and environmental phase. Currently, we're in the PSR Phase, almost complete. It's at Caltrans now being reviewed. And once that gets reviewed and approved, it's, it's a technical document, then it's complete. And when we start competing for our tip money at the end of, in the beginning, beginning few months of 2021, we'll use that document. We needed that document in order to start competing for construction money. Now, I will, I will say that most of the time, the first phase, you don't get construction money. And then in those two years, before we pursue the next cycle, we'll have time to get down the line with design and environmental, which always helps the applications. I'm not being negative, it's just, the, the first time you get in the cycle, it's usually the recognition time. And then hopefully, the second time, you get some money. I'm, I'm, I'm just basing that on what's happened in the past around the state. Sorry, that was a long one.
Okay, last question, if. No, that's perfect. And if we choose not to approve, to go forward on this, what is our downside? Besides not having Pioneer widened?
Well, the downside, I, I, I don't look at it from the point of view of not having Pioneer widen, widening. If we stop the project, we don't get Pioneer widening. I understand that, and that's a council decision. Right now, we're going down the line of widening it. We've accepted Measure V Regional Money. But you're right, if we stop, then we, we don't, the project stops. This particular money that's available, will be available through, I believe it's the end of February. So there's another, there's another time available to come before you for approval. I recommend we get this matching money while it's there. It's also what MCAG has committed to do for us at our request, at our request. Doesn't mean we can't change it, but we did request to have all these priorities as listed in their staff report, and they did give it to us. And their staff is definitely following through. So the, the answer is, yeah, if we don't get money, we still have the 8.65 million that we can proceed with, if that's so directed. But any additional money that we can get during the environmental and design phase, that money can be put into the construction phase. And some of that 8.65 million dollars could possibly be transferred over to the very high cost of construction. And we'll have some, a little, well, not a local match, but we'll have a local amount when we ask for money. That's just, that's just where we're going. But you're right, Councilperson Jones, if we stop the whole process, then it stops. This is a funding mechanism to keep the process going, to help keep the process going.
Okay, specifically, what will we have to pay back if we stop it tonight?
There's nothing that we have to pay back. We're, we're using other funding at the moment. The, I don't believe, I have to look at the Measure V Agreement. I don't believe there was a reimbursement. I, I know there was a performance that we have committed to, to proceed with this project. This money, we still have to apply for. The CTC still has to give, give it to us. We still have to, we would still have to sign the acceptance papers and stuff. So there is many steps before this 1.2 million would, would come to us. So, so it's how, however you look at it, if, if for some reason there's a change in direction, and all the history that I gave you was all unanimous votes by the council at the time, just to bring that up. So we were proceeding on direction from the council. But if, if we do stop this, or we do pull back, and if we don't apply for it now, we do have, we can apply for it a little bit later. I think to apply for it now is a good idea. It's still an application process. CTC still has to approve it. We still have a chance at that point. If for some reason the project isn't a go, and that's up to you. If the project isn't a go, then we can stop that funding. Payback, I don't know. I have to look at the Measure V Agreement. Currently, we're only into about, it's 170 plus, Caltrans got about, we're only about $210,000 into this project. Phase 1 for Mark, Mark Thomas on the PSR wasn't very expensive. And we do have some money that we have had to pay to Caltrans in order for them to review the project, to review the PSR. So we do have some money out there. So that, that's my answer. There's not much out there at the moment.
Okay, you know, I, I, I'm still curious on this design. The only thing is, is it was presented as a way to help alleviate traffic off Pacheco. And I'm still not convinced that it's gonna do it. Now taking a look at the plans, or the ideas. So I guess as we go along a little farther, we'll know more and more. But I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not 100% convinced on this is gonna help alleviate traffic off Pacheco. So that's where I stand. So that's where I stand.
One thing, Councilman Jones, is we will have, the environmental phase probably will be a full-on EIR. There's a real chance it may go to that stage. If it all, if, if it does go to that stage, definitely all those traffic issues will be answered at that time. Even if it's not that, the, the traffic part will be equivalent to a full EIR. Now, one thing that you did bring up about reimbursement, what we would owe, it's a different story, and I just wanted to bring this up so everyone knows. It's a different story with the specific plan money that we got. We, that was a grant of $500,000 that we put 11.47% down. I think that's amounts to, the grant from Caltrans was $442,000. They have paid us in the neighborhood of $350,000 reimbursement already. If we don't fulfill our obligation on timelines on that, and that is just to finish the document, just present it to the council as just accepting that it's a planning document, document. You don't have to prove it, because there's no environmental done on it. It's just a planning document. And then invoice them 100% and give them a final, final report on the job by February 1st, then we're liable to have to pay back anything that they reimburse us on that. And I, I don't think that should be an issue, because that is a planning document of a road that, whether it's now or in the future, will eventually be developed out, whether it's by the city, by this project, or by development. It'll be developed out, and there's standards that will be in this document that can go on and on. So I don't think there's at all an issue with doing that, because eventually that document will be, will be used, hopefully, for definitely. As the next designers look at it, they'll look at this document and make sure the road coincides to what this document said. So that does have a payback issue. But that's, that's a little bit different. That's on the, the specific plans that we'll have the November 10th meeting on.
Okay, thank you.
I'm kinda mixing the two together. I just wanted to let you know that there is a payback associated with, with those two grants, if we don't, if we don't fulfill our requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mrs. Lewis, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Well, you know, the council has given me direction since the inception of this project. And we convinced MCAG to set aside $8 million of the Measure V money. Well, we lose that $8 million if that project goes away, and that money gets reprogrammed to other people. So the council has given me direction all this time to go ahead with this project and to work with MCAG, and Mark has worked really hard to do this. And we need to know if we're gonna continue, because it's, to this point, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I don't want to see us waste any money. So if this is not a council priority, we need to hear it now, and/or else move on. Because this, this project is a good project, and it will help alleviate traffic. But the EIR will tell us, full-on EIR will tell us exactly what we need to know. I won't be here to, to, to be officiating over this. So wherever the council wants, it's, it's gonna be up to them. We've started this project, but believe me, that $8 million is gonna be gone in a heartbeat. All right. So, uh, let's go on to, uh, let's see, this is, is this a public hearing, Bill? No? No?
No, it's no public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So are there any additional questions by council? All right. Do I have a motion? City Council Resolution Number 6282.
You mean 6281.
I'm sorry, 6281. Thank you, Mr. Fariah.
You bet. I would make the motion if Mayor would, would like me to.
Go ahead.
I'll move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6281 as read by title.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. So a motion by Fariah, seconded by Lewis for the approval of Resolution 6281. Uh, Fariah?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Alalta, yes. Okay, let's go on to Item 9. Award of Collection Services Agreement and Franchise to Mid Valley Disposal for Residential and Commercial Garbage Recyclable Materials and Organic Waste Collection.
Mayor, if I might, Mayor, if I might? I'm, I'm hearing some feedback.
Uh, we're hearing it with you too, Alex.
Yeah, so we did, Sonia?
It generally happens if somebody's using earbuds, especially the wireless kind. So if anybody's using the wireless earbuds, then that's generally causing the feedback. And in addition, would be, um, everybody's microphones are on at the same time, and the, the volumes are contradicting each other. So if you're not speaking, please make sure you mute your microphone. Can you hear it with me?
Yeah, Sonia, I think it's better now. I think it was actually when Mark turned his mic off, it got better.
Well, there you go. It's all Mark's fault. So Mark, don't talk anymore tonight, I think. I think we can go ahead, Mayor. Go forward.
Okay. I, I did something else. I took the, uh, the, the floor speakers off as the sound, and, and, and I'm using the, uh, the, the ears now, uh, on the, on the earphones. So I hope that helps too.
It seems to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, uh, I'll just read this again. Uh, Award of Collection Services Agreement and Franchise to Mid Valley Disposal for Residential and Commercial Garbage Recyclable Material and Organic Waste Collection Services. Item 9A, City Council Resolution Number 6282. Approving Collection Services Agreement and Franchise to Mid Disposal for the provision of residential and commercial garbage, recyclable material, and organic waste collection services. And we're back to Mark.
Yes, I, I don't know if that was a request not to talk or what, but that's okay. Tonight, we're actually coming down the road here. We're, we're looking for the council to adopt Resolution 6282 to Mid Valley Disposal for Collective Services Agreement and a Franchise for Residential and Commercial Garbage, Recyclable Material, and Organic Waste Services, and authorizes the mayor to execute said agreement. Tonight, and in a minute, I'll, I'll let him have the floor. But Richard Taggart Erwin, who is the President of R3, on my popular demand, is coming back to present to you a PowerPoint. It's gonna be a lot of the PowerPoint you saw before. History is very important. It's important that we go over the same things. And as far as the history, the only thing that's different from the last time is on October 21st, at the last meeting, the City Council did approve a resolution declaring its intent to award a franchise agreement to Mid Valley Disposal. And on October 22nd, staff put that intent of award was posted on the city's website. And this was a requirement of the, of the RFP. The proposal had five working days to submit a written protest once it was posted on the website. It's been many days past five. We haven't gotten any written protests at this time. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Richard again, and let him go through another really good PowerPoint, hopefully bringing us to the point where we can approve this agreement, and Mid Valley can start ordering vehicles and start doing some of the things they need to do to get this up to speed on July 1st, 2021. There you go, Richard.
You're muted. It works better when I'm muted, doesn't it? Thank you, Mark, and Mayor and council are happy to be back for this, hopefully this last hurled tonight. And it's really just to award, adopt the resolution to award the franchise agreement. The only changes in the franchise agreement from last month is we updated the exhibits specifically for the Transition Operation Plan, the Sustainability Plan, and the Diversion Plan. And that was pulled directly out of, of Mid Valley's proposal and updated for the corrected dates for, for when we're, when we are moving, moving forward this agreement tonight. So next slide. So again, that is the recommendation to adopt the resolution. I think it's 2682 for award of the contract. I think Mark has already mentioned that there were no protests, so it looks like smooth sailing at this point. I believe Mid Valley has dropped off signed copies, and they're working through the insurance requirements, performance bond, and, and those types of kind of paperwork they have to have prior to the, the contract actually being executed. Next slide. Next slide. And just a little bit of background, the current agreement with, with Republic Services expires June of, of twenty twenty-one. Um, the, the city council did authorize, uh, uh, provide direction to negotiate with, with Mid Valley. We have been doing that and we have a pretty much ironclad agreement put in place for you that will last for ten years. Um, ho- hopefully they will not be coming back in and asking for changes. Uh, I, I don't think that will be the case. Um, in October twenty-first of last month, uh, the council did, uh, adopt a resolution declaring its intent to award the franchise agreement. Next slide. And sort of the key points, sort of to summarize the key points, it is a ten-year base term with option to extend. The city can offer, Mid Valley has the option to say yes or no. The, you, you can't force an extension on them, but the, the offer has to come from the city. It is not an automatic extension. Um, the agreement is complying with all legislative requirements. The city's in good shape going forward, legislative compliance. Um, we, we think that you, you're well protected and it is not going to be over the onerous on your ratepayers. We try to keep that very clearly in mind, particularly with the commercial sectors. Uh, don't get ahead of the game, be in the game, but don't, you don't need to be leading the pack. Um, we heard that loud and clear. We wanted to make sure that that's, that's covered in here. In terms of the compensation for, uh, you pay your, your holler, they, they are on an eighty percent CPI with a total of three point five percent rate cap, um, which is a good control mechanism the city has going forward. They are required to offer employment to all of its place, the public employees, including mechanics, customer service reps, uh, and drivers and, and, and associated. Because, you know, I think as we all know, it's a pretty tight labor market when it comes to try to find mechanics and drivers. So it's, it's unlikely that qualified employees will have a, uh, a difficult time being picked up by Mid Valley. Um, and, and one of the things that did, did separate Mid Valley from some of the other firms was they really laid out a really good transition implementation and in community engagement as they go forward in terms of meeting with the community, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, meeting with the city staff, because there's a lot of changes that are going to occur with any kind of a transition. They've laid out a really good implementation plan that they'll be working through with staff on, kind of checking it, checking it off. And it's detailed by the month for the next, basically the next eight months until it starts. Next slide. Um, I think, um, two months ago, I think you, most of the council members did go out on site, uh, at the city, city corp yard to look at the trucks that they're providing or going to be proposing. These were the trucks I think that the council wanted to have. I think it's a good point because they, the way that the lift is on, on the residential trucks, it's a vertical lift. It doesn't go out and flip over the top. And so the spillage is, is really minimalized in doing this. So these are the trucks that are in the contract. These are the trucks that they'll be providing for you. Next slide. Um, and in the cab, I don't know if any of you actually got a chance to go in the cab, but again, stressing that Mid, that, uh, Mid Valley is, is really pushing technology to help them run their operations, help your customer service have accurate account data and, and, and making sure that, you know, the customers are serviced properly. There's scales on the trucks, there's, there's onboard cameras, there's GPS on the trucks, there's RDFI tags on all the containers, so they'll know where the carts are, when they're picked up. When they're not picked up, they will be taking digital pictures, digital documentation. If there are blockages, that where they cannot pick up the cart, if they're overloaded, if there's contamination. So all that's uploaded into the dat, the data system and that will be coordinated with the city. So, because you, the city does the billing and some of those additional charges would have to put back to the, the customers. Next slide. Um, also, um, last month, they did bring out, roll out some containers. Uh, this is something the city will have to engage with sooner than later because there's a couple of different labeling, um, uh, methodologies for the containers. Um, what we would recommend, and I think that the staff was pretty much in agreement, the, the labeling with pictures and words seems to be a little easier to follow than just a kind of a bulleted list of this is what goes in each container. And so that has to be, I think, confirmed ASAP so, so they can get their containers ordered up because the, the labeling is not a sticker, it's embossed into the container, so it doesn't come off. Okay, next slide. Um, other pieces that are important is they are going to process the recyclables at their recovery, material recovery facility. And, and so that is a, it's ultimately going to be a fairly substantial savings to your ratepayers over the current arrangements that you have now. So we, we thought that was a very positive thing for your ratepayers and it actually showed up in how, how the pricing came out. So that's just kind of a picture of the inside of their material recovery facility. Uh, I think they're open to having, having council or tours come in and take a look at the facility. It's, it's really pretty nice. It's state of the art. Next slide. Uh, similarly for the organics, which is not just green waste, but it's food waste, green waste mixed or food waste only for some of the commercial customers. They'll be processing at their facility, permitted facility, and that will start from the first day of the contract. So you'll be, you'll be in compliance with where you need to go from, from day one. And again, that was a relatively low, it was a lower cost option than, 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 um, frankly, uh, hauling the, the mixed green and organics up to San Francisco Bay Area for, for other processing. Next slide. Um, additionally, um, they are committed to operating a fully staffed customer service office and corporation yard within the city. I think they're looking for property now to, to come up with that site. Um, they will be providing, um, for residential curbside collections, including e-waste at no additional cost. They've increased the community cleanup, cleanup days from the current two to four days per year. And they're going to have free paper shredding at those events. Um, a compliance issue is they are going to provide up to two thousand cubic yards of mulch or a thousand cubic yards of compost back to the city. And it's, it's kind of a part of the, uh, regulatory requirements, which is a purchase, buy recycle purchase practice the city does have to embrace. So they're going to be bringing that material back to you so you don't have to pay for it. Um, and they are going to provide two full-time dedicated recycling coordinators to do the outreach with your, your customers to make sure that the programs are implemented and their, and containers are correctly sized for each account. Next slide. In terms of sustainability staff, um, they are required to have between forty to fifty-five percent franchise diversion. Um, requirement starts at forty percent and ramps up to fifty-five percent. I think right now the city's about twenty-eight percent, so it's a pretty big lift that they're going to have. They're going to assist the city on any other calorie cycle requirements as they may, may occur and as the city is required to have. Um, there, obviously there's a lot of, a lot of latitude and a little bit of gray area of what the city actually has to do, but they're there to support you. They will support, uh, both the city and the county and regional agency for the edible food recovery requirements. Again, two dedicated full-time staff that are doing the outreach and, and right sizing with your, particularly your commercial customers. Um, they have a dedicated web, website to, to, for Los Bonos. They're going to be providing annual recycling awards. Uh, again, commercial waste audits and right sizing containers. It's really important that that occurs so your customer, your commercial customers don't overpay. Because as the organics are, are rolled out and as more recycling is, is rolled out, the level of garbage service that they're currently having, that can drop. That will help them reduce or at least maintain their costs going forward. Um, education.
Good, I'm sorry. Ri- Ri- Richard, I'm sorry, and, and Mayor, I'm sorry. Um, if I might? My, Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I interrupt, please?
Yes, of course.
So it's, I'm sorry, Richard, it's come to my attention that we do not have audio going out, um, on our government channel. So, uh, unfortunately, given our, we're, we're having technical difficulties. So, um, I, I, I'd suggest, um, taking a brief break while we try to fix the audio. Hate to interrupt your flow, Richard.
That's okay.
But I, I think it's important. We do have audio going out. So, um, let me, it, again, let me suggest we take, uh, maybe a, a ten-minute break uh, to see if we can fix that audio.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, then I'll, I'll defer to you while we, while we take a brief break.
Do we want to, uh, sign off or just have, uh, everyone stay online or just mute their cameras for this point? And then I'll, I'll time it and come back in ten minutes?
Why, how about we do that? That sounds like a good idea.
Okay, so if everyone would mute their cameras for ten minutes, uh, I'll come back on and...
Not happen very often at all where you get into that kind of trouble, but you are well protected there. There is a $5 million pollution liability insurance. There is termination for habitual violator. And what that means is, is you have in the agreement basically fines that you can assess for miscollections and those types of things. But if you're finding out that they continue to do the same thing and they don't correct it, that would, that really starts leading into habitual violator and that is grounds for termination. So if there's just a problem with an ongoing problem, they are not correct and city does have the ability to do, to deem them as a habitual violator and terminate the contract early. We would hope that would not happen at all. There are performance reviews of the contract term that Mid Valley is required to do and we strongly suggest you do those. It's important particularly after the first year to have a good check-in to make sure all the programs that were promised have been, have been provided. And then throughout the contract. You know, again, there's administrative charges, performance issues, you know, there's, there's a fairly long list of them from miscollections to not replacing carts, to not turning in reports on time, to, to all the way to termination if they continue doing, you know, bad behavior. One of the ones I think is important is, is you'll, you'll have a tracking of overweight vehicles. So if they're running overweight vehicles, the city will be notified of that. There's a threshold of, I think it's 10 or, 10 or so per year. Then above that, they are, the city can hit them with liquidated damages. Similarly, on, on hydraulic spills and whatnot, they are required to repair, you know, one, first and foremost, to immediately take care, take care of the action. But also they're required to, to restore the area to the pre-spill conditions. And that is on the holler to do. That is something new, so there should, you should not have any problems with hydraulic spills in the future, particularly because they're going to put in brand-new trucks from day one, so you shouldn't have any issues there. A lot of reporting requirements that are driven really from calorie cycle on tonnages by line of business, diversion, route operations and legislative compliance. So you'll have all the reports that you need going forward to be able to, to really better manage this contract. Next slide. What you're currently paying for collection, for disposal, for organics process and recycling process and compared to what you will be paying into the future, it's about a $400,000 a year less going into the future than you are paying now. So how that relates back to the customers, the city sets the rates and I think you'll have, you'll have a little bit of area to work with on that one. Again, you've got a, for, for the commercial customers, very similar to residential customers, their base level of service has recycling and has organics. So they're, they're going to have those services from, from day one, which is a good thing. Again, they have the ability to downsize their garbage service, reduce their cost if they can downsize. And, and basically they can go from a, you know, four cubic yards of trash to three cubic yards, that's an ability that they have to reduce their cost. Your, your payments to, to Mid Valley are predicated on 80% CPI with, you know, three and a half percent annual cap on that. Mid Valley directly pays disposal and processing costs. The city will no longer be obligated or liable for paying the disposal and processing costs. That is coming out of Mid Valley directly. In terms of the impact of the city, within 30 days of, of executions agreement, Mid Valley will pay the city $150,000 to reverse the city for its cost of this procurement process. And then on an annualized basis, they pay the city about $990,000 for a combination of road impact fee, 8939, nine feet administrative fee. Because the city does the billing, collects the money and you pay them for services, that fee will just be deducted from what you pay them. It's a pretty straightforward piece to do and it's tracked very well. Next slide. And that is, that is pretty much concludes it. And I think what we're asking tonight is to adopt a resolution to award the franchise agreement to Mid Valley disposal for commercial garbage recyclers and organic waste collection services. And any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Richard. Let's go to Mr. Free, do you have any questions?
Hang on, you have the right button there. No, I don't have any questions. I'm glad to see that we're going to be able to lower the rates a little bit. Thank you.
Mrs. Santos, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, just a, just a question, please. Um, so it's something I probably should have asked way a long time ago, but I wanted to make sure with them bringing on, which I think is wonderful, with them bringing on contracts approved and everything, with them bringing on all the employees that wish to be brought on from Republic Services, how comparison, I guess some staffing salary wise? Because I would hate to see that we were bringing company that we really, we seem to like into here, into town and they're giving up their employees a significant drop in pay, which would, I personally think causes a lot of other problems.
Um, in, in the RFP process, we did require Republic to provide that information so that, so all of the vendors had that information. I believe there's, they were trying to at least match the, the overall compensation. So, you know, hopefully there not be, will not be a, a negative change on compensation. And I know talking with Mid Valley, their employees are really happy working for them. So they, they have a pretty high retention rate of employees, which is a good thing.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I just, it was just a question I, I know I should have asked this question some time ago, but yeah, I just had some worries on, you know, comparison. Because if someone's going from $20 an hour or $18 an hour and they're dropping down to 14 or, or 15, I, I would feel, I would not feel very good about that. But thank you very much.
Mrs. Santos, would you feel more comfortable if, if we requested a salary schedule from current and from Mid Valley?
Uh, well, I would like to just see, well, I don't necessarily need that schedule, but I would like to at least understand that, that that is something that is going to be strived. I don't necessarily need the schedule currently, but I would love to see that that is something.
That is, okay. You gotta be careful there, you have an agreement in front of you that doesn't call that out. The RFP said that this is the rates that they were paid and they had to ma, and they had to match them as close as possible. And then they have to provide employment for a certain amount of time and those employees have to, you know, buy on to, to Mid Valley's customer service request. But i- if you do that, you, if you actually want to, that's not really part of the agreement. So I, I would tend to stay away from requesting that because that was provided to them in the RFP process.
All right, well, let me ask this then. Are we saying if we approve this agreement, we're approving it under the assumption that it's apples for apples, basically on the salary?
I, I can't, I can't make that claim. But what I, what I can comfortably say is for Mid Valley or any service provider to come into the city and provide services, they have to provide a, a decent wage package to attract employees, particularly the drivers and mechanics. Because, you know, Bay Area wages are substantially higher and in order to get the drivers and mechanics to work locally, they have to pay them a reasonable wage. So it, it is a bit of a market, you know, supply and demand issue. That was, it's not the best I can, I can tell you. In order to get the employees, they're going to have to pay them.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to at least, I do apologize for something I missed in the past and I knew I should have passed this a long time ago, but I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at something similar. Thank you.
I just want you to be comfortable, Mrs. Santos, in your questions. Okay, all right, all right, then, then we'll move on then. Let's go on to Mr. Jones, any questions?
No, I'm good, Mary.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I have a few questions, if I may.
Go ahead.
On the, where, there are some key points of franchise agreements between what Mid, uh, Mid Valley is going to offer versus what we're receiving now. And I know that the first one, under basic services level, it talks about all customers will receive garbage recycling and organic waste collection. Organic waste includes green waste and food waste. Since we've not done that before, is there going to be an education process for the community as to whether or not that the garbage waste has to be contained in some sort of way? Or, or exactly how it's supposed to be disposed of?
Yeah, yes, and again, within their, both their transition and outreach plan, they have it laid out of, of how, how that's going to be implemented and going out to the community and educating the community so they can do it properly. For residential customers, it's basically, it's just putting the food waste in the green waste containers. It's a pretty simple process. For commercial customers, it's a separate container.
Okay, okay. Okay, and then there's also a customer billing clause that says the city will continue to bill customers. There is a clause in the agreement that should the city direct the contractor to bill the customer directly. This can be done without negotiating the contract. So if somebody can explain that more, I need help on it.
Let, let me try on this one, please. Currently, our finance department sends the bills as part of the billing and they're going to keep that billing process going. All Mid Valley says is that they can bill out the commercial customers if, if it's ever required. And at this time, our finance department wants to keep that in-house.
Okay, so there's not, what we've been doing, what we've been doing.
No, it, it will be the same thing as what we were doing. Mid Valley did offer this option and we turned it down, but they just put it in there as in case in the future, you wanted to do it.
Okay. And I, I have one other one, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. There's, uh, there's going to be a large item collection. Each resident, each residential customer has an on-call large item collection up to four times the count of the year. Will also have a.
Can we turn our microphones off if we're not using them, please?
Okay, and then we also have a cleanup event day, which is kind of what we have now, which will go from two times a year to four times a year. So on the first one, for the residential customer, is that going to be, well, if it's four times a year, is that going to be something where they can call Mid Valley and say, hey, I have some large items that need to be picked up and make arrangements directly with the co, uh, company, or how is that done?
That's, that's how it's done. It is arranged with Mid Valley to have it scheduled pickup at their house, at the curb of their house. Yeah, and they, they are pre-scheduled on a citywide basis.
Okay, and, and is there an extra char, an extra charge for that?
No.
Okay, thank you. That, those are all my questions. Those are all my questions.
One, one thing about that councilperson Lewis is that actually was also a part of our current contract. It was never advertised or put out there like it should have been. And this particular benefit will be advertised to the residents quite frequently. So it's actually used. It wasn't the previous contract, it just never got.
Well, that, that certainly will help with some of the blight in the community of people who are just keeping items around because they're waiting for that twice a year at the fairgrounds. They can call in and, and have those items picked up.
And, and one more, one more item that might help with that, and I think this was a councilperson Jones is concerned in the, it, he asked about maybe if there was a bin or bin available to people to drop off at their, where they park their trucks and their vehicles. They're, they'll look into that because they really don't know where that spot is yet. They, they might have it all joint together or they might have that outside city limits in an office downtown, they're not sure. But if they have that availability, they'll, they seem to be very open to that prospect. And I believe councilperson Jones had asked that perhaps.
Okay, Richard, my only question, and, and I'd like this stated publicly, is that, you know, Los Angeles is always a trendsetter of taking on new things to save the environment. And then we're the ones getting stuck for the cost and other people, other municipalities that, that don't do recycling and are doing basic services, basically we have to fight them off when a raise comes down. So again, I'd like you to tell me that, that because we're going to be doing organic food recycling, that our rates are not going to go up and we're taking up an extra, we're taking on an extra service?
The, the, what you're paying for in the future includes your disposal processing, organics processing as well. And it is limited to the 80% CPI with a three and a half percent cap. So regardless of what happens to Mid Valley's internal cost for, for recycling, if it goes up, you still have a limit on the overall rate increase and the 80% CPI. So it is not going to get passed on. For example, when China's Ford hit and, and the recycling markets just cratered, that got passed on to your customers and your, and your cost, your customers recycling went from, you know, quote unquote, a revenue, revenue payment to a cost. That will not happen in the future because there will not be, that will not be passed on to the customers. That, that is a Mid Valley internal cost only. Same thing for organics.
But you would, you had said that the rates actually, they could go to a smaller container and save money.
Yes.
And our, our rates would be, our, our rates would go down and not up and included another service?
Yeah, yes, if, if in fact they can downsize their garbage carts, because the, the collection rates are all predicated on the size of the garbage and frequency of garbage. So if they can downsize their garbage carts, their basic bill will go down compared to what it would be otherwise. If they can change their frequency of collection, commercial customers can reduce their collection frequency from four times a week to three times a week. Again, that's a, that's a method that they can use to reduce their bill. And, and.
I'd like to say one thing though, to keep in mind here, and that's why you have to wait for the, the 218 process. We're talking about our, our carriers' rates. There also is street sweeping, admin, landfill closure costs that get incorporated into these rates that looks at into Prop 218. And those are city functions. I'm not saying they're going to go up, but in fact, we have enough money probably already built up to handle closing the landfill. But there is a, quite a percentage of that monthly rate to our residents that comes out of the city, not out of the carrier. So we're, we're talking about maybe a re, a reduction or the same fee based on what the carrier's doing. We haven't looked at an overall study with what the city will be doing in the future. And that's why we'll probably in the next six months, we'll be approaching you with a Prop 218 that shows the whole fee analysis. Does that make sense?
It does. With the council at that time, we're, my only concern, I, I hear an echo again. My only concern is that we do not encumber another cost for our citizens that's going to be tacked on until we absolutely have to. If this cost is going to be absorbed and our citizens can save money. If this cost is going to be absorbed and our citizens can save money, yes, go, by all means, go for it. But the Prop two eighteen process is twenty twenty, not Prop two eighteen. The organics, uh, thirteen, whatever, is not till twenty twenty-two. And I just don't want to see it as history repeat itself. That we are taking on an additional service for our customers. And then all of a sudden, the rates are going to go up because someone's going to come back and tell us. Well, you're doing more things to save the environment and now it's going to cost our citizens.
And, and as we, and as we discussed earlier, Mayor. The rate that Mid Valley's going to charge us to take care of our organics per ton. Is quite a bit less than the rate if we kept it in the waste stream. So we'll be meeting, we'll be meeting the requirement and having a less rate, especially with what we're being charged now. So.
It's all I want to hear.
Yeah, we'll be able to meet an environmental requirement and still have a less of a rate than if it just went in the garbage, which I think is very good for everybody involved.
I, I agree. I, I agree. I'm, I'm not questioning that. Uh, but, but I see the requirement for jurisdictions in twenty twenty-two because of COVID. It may get stretched out to twenty twenty-four. And all I keep hearing is that if we do this, then, and then costs go up. Our citizens are, are stuck with this bill. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing. Just want to make sure we're getting the best price and if it's included. And we can save money for our citizens, by all means. But to take on extra services right now. And then all of a sudden have this transferred to the, the, uh, to our citizens, uh, doesn't fly with me. So that's why I want it publicly stated that, that our, we're going to be, uh, incorporating this. And we're going to be charging less money based on and including the organic waste. That's fine with me.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Uh, Councilmember Lewis, you indicated that the organic waste, um. Law in California doesn't start until two thousand twenty-two. Uh, i- is that correct in my?
Maybe.
Maybe, okay.
Well, the, 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 um, the actual org- there's several organic waste laws. The ones I think we're all talking about now is SB thirteen eighty-three. And that's actually the climate, um, greenhouse gas reduction act. What that law does is it just puts teeth into implementation. Of, of what was SB eighteen twenty-six, which is actually the organic law that requires mandatory collection of organics. Which has been the law since twenty sixteen. The, the, the issue with twenty, with, with the eighteen twenty-six implementation is, one. Um, your regional agency didn't have the ability to process food waste, so they couldn't do it at the time. And two, um, there were no teeth, there, there are no teeth in that law. So n- n- no one, neither the generators nor the city had to really put their feet to the fire to implement it. Um, SB thirteen eighty-three puts in essence teeth with that, with potential fines that originate from the state for non-compliance. We don't think that's going to happen, but the actual collection part of the law has been in place since twenty sixteen.
Okay, and I, I hear that, uh, the twenty sixteen date, but nobody's been doing it. I think that's what the mayor's indicating, and we've been caught doing things trying to save the environment. And be politically correct, and we, we paid for it, and other cities within our county have not done it. So I would have to say that until everybody in Merced County is doing it. And everybody in the state of California is doing it, why are we going to force our customers to do it? Until at, you know, at such time, there is that date certain that everybody has to do it. I, 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 I don't want to, you know, see our customers again, as the mayor say, have to do something and then we have to pay for. And, you know, there's another two or three years and the state makes all these threats and nobody's doing anything, but we're doing it. And, and our customers are paying for it. So I, I would have to, I, I know that, that I don't want to see our customers. Pay for anything not one day sooner than they have to. Especially in the organic.
Kurt, just to, to refresh, and I think we mentioned it before. The city of Los Banas is currently under a compliance order with the state for not fulfilling this, this law. So it's not like we have, we haven't skipped under the radar, we're on the top of the radar, uh, for whatever reason, I don't know, but we are. Um, and they have accepted our plan as a way to get out of that compliance order that we have now. And, um, just to let you know, and then we're trying to follow it as closely as possible.
Why are we the only ones with the compliance order?
We're not. They, they complied to many, many jurisdictions in the, in California. I don't have numbers for you, but we weren't the only ones. There was quite a few jurisdictions that probably have compliance.
But we have, we have municipalities, and I, I know, Mark, I understand, but we have municipalities in Merced County that aren't even doing recycling. And, and no one says boo to them. So I don't mind doing the organic waste. But I do mind i- if our citizens, if it's going to be the same cost to include organics. As it would to not include organics, I'm fine. I'm fine with that. I am not fine with all of a sudden finding out that we're going to have to pay more money for organics.
I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe that you'll find a lot more jurisdictions that you, that are out of compliance getting. With the state getting very serious with them. I think that, um, whether it's considered unfair or what happened in the past or not, that's true. Now, on the residential side, remember, all you're talking about is putting it into a different can. If we don't have to meet a compliance, they can put it in either one of the cans they want. I mean, that's not an issue. And, and Mid Valley will do their same processing with no charge to anybody, e- e- either way. So that's that, that way. Now, on the commercial side, if they have to put it into a different container. They, they actually can get a smaller container, a little bit smaller container for their normal garbage. And actually, the rate may go down. Who knows? They might be able to be more efficient with their garbage. Uh, but for residential, there is no, there's a difference between whether you put it in this container or this container. And how its process is up to Mid Valley, because they're going to, they're going to dump it according to which container it's in. And until the time comes when actually, you know, if the state extends it, whatever you said. Then they'll be checking for compliance and issuing non-compliance to people, but they won't be doing that if we're not under that, if that. Law has been extended for any reason at all, obviously. But, but like I said, on residential, it's just which bin you put it in. And it's the same two bins we have now. We're not increasing a bin, a bin count for residential at all.
Well, I don't want to increase costs to our residents. Because we're adding another service. And saying we have to comply and no one else does. I'm totally against that. Absolutely. I mean, if, 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 the statement I heard in, in, in the beginning, and I think Mrs. Lewis said it too. Is that if we're going to take on additional service and, you know, our costs are not going to go up to our residents, so be it. But if, if, if all of a sudden this is double talk and, and we're not going to, we're not going to have any kind of reduction for our, our citizens. Or they're not able to, uh, to save money and we're adding an additional service. I can't in good conscience approve that, because I am tired, very tired of having other jurisdictions not comply. And we're passing the costs on to our citizens. I just went through this with the recyclables. And we had, we're writing a special ordinance because, uh, or a special, uh, uh, a rule. Because Los Banas complained because we were not going to pay an additional four hundred thousand dollars for recycling.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and I think this issue will come up in the Prop two eighteen process, more than the carrier. It's, it's, it has to do with the Prop two eighteen process more than, more than with this carrier, okay? So if that's the case, then that's something that we'll, that we'll look at in great, great detail, which we were going to anyway during the Prop two eighteen process.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I might, just, yeah, Mark, we're, we're anticipating a rate reduction. At this point, is that correct?
At this point, just based on the carrier's fees, not based on the city's fees. It looks like it could be up to a five percent reduction on residential. It's hard to put, it's hard to put that on the, to figure that out with the commercial, because each one's a different can, it's a different size. But we don't see that going up, but I don't know if there'll be a reduction there. That's what we're doing. As I said, the two eighteen will also put in city fees, street sweeping budget, uh, landfill closure issues, which are already in there. So if everything holds copacetic and it goes up just by percentages, nothing more, and the capitals, you know, can be met. Yes, there should be a reduction, a monthly reduction.
So let me ask this question. By approving this contract. We are not then dictating that we are going to do organic recycling? But if we want to, it's included in this contract?
The, the contract requires the, the Mid Valley to provide the services. It is not Mid Valley's responsibility to make the generators take the services.
Okay.
So generators can refuse. That's where, you know, once the implementation occurs and, and the SB thirteen eighty-three timeline gets sorted out with the state. That will come back to the city, and it's really the city's responsibility to require the generators to accept that program.
Okay.
So we, we cannot make, you cannot make your contractor, um, hold a generator responsible for it, because they can't.
Two, two separate entities. I, I understand. I understand. And Alex, you had mentioned that, uh, a- and, and this is what I kept through, hearing through all the presentations over the weeks. Is that there could be as much as a five percent reduction in cost services to our residential.
Is that a question, or I?
Is it, is it, is it a statement? It's a statement. Is that true? Is that a true statement?
I think that's what Mr. Patient just, just.
Okay. All right, well.
Yes, that, that, Mayor, that is a true statement, uh, at this point. That definitely is a true point, a statement. I do not see, besides cost of living, that the city end of the, of the monthly fees will go, will go up any more than. A normal rating, you know, inflation or whatever that is, and that, that's built into that. Um, we are coming really close to going into the landfill closure project. Uh, at a very reduced, reduced price than we first estimated. Uh, we have a, we have a yearly maintenance thing that isn't, maintenance fee that isn't that much. So with the city keeping their part of the end down, yes, it looks like up to, up to a five percent increase. I'd say three to five, but I, I just haven't, I just, I'm not a Prop two eighteen person, so I, I can't verify that exactly. But that, that's what it looks like in the preliminary look at it.
Well, then my advice would be when the two eighteen process comes up for this future council. Then to take that organic recycling waste into consideration. When the rates are presented to you, find out what the current rates are, and if there's going to be any increase for organics. Because restaurants are starving now. We don't know what COVID is going to happen. And, and, and increasing and, 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 and make, and, and settling these guys or, or. Or saddling these guys with another charge when they're not making any money right now is totally ludicrous. So that's going to have to be dealt with in the two eighteen process. But as I understand it, Mid Valley will, will provide the services, but it's not their responsibility to make the customers take the services. And that's going to be on the city, so the city can deal with that if the rates, if they increase or decrease in the two eighteen process. Richard, would that be pretty much a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Okay. All right. I'm done with my questions. All right, so, um. City Council Resolution Number Six Two Eight Two. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, City Council Resolution Number Six Two Eight Two, as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll select that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Lewis, second by Mr. Faria. Mr. Faria?
Yes.
Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. You done, you done a final comment? When the two eighteen process comes up, then that current council will be dealing with it. And this is separate action from, uh, uh, from that. Okay, contract is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to Item Ten, First Quarter Financial Report for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty-One. Finance Director Williams?
Good afternoon. I'm just trying to bring up my presentation here. I guess it's not afternoon anymore, it's evening. Okay, so what we have tonight is the financial report for the first quarter, which goes, um, from July first of two thousand and twenty to September thirtieth. Of two thousand and twenty. We are just covering activities that happen in that timeframe. Um, staff has repaired the financial report for your review, which was included with your, your staff report. Basically, because we're dealing with that timeframe, there's not a lot of new information that we can provide since we started the budget. Um, this is going to take a look at the revenues and expenditures mainly in the general fund. Um, overall, projections are generally on target. We will also touch on Measure P, the enterprise funds. And a little bit of information on the lighting and landscape districts. Um, but basically, we still feel it's too early to identify any financial trends. The general fund summary, and I have, and some of the numbers are going to change from the financial quarterly report we put out. Because after it was printed and after the agenda was released, we did receive the, the second payment, the, um, August payment. Of sales tax. So I wanted to go ahead and, and include that in the PowerPoint presentation. That way you do have a better idea of where we are and what's happening. So, um, when we pass the budget, we, uh, pass the budget anticipating that we'd bring in just over nineteen million in revenues. And right now, we're at about two point six million dollars, and that's only fourteen percent. Generally, when you think of a quarter, you think I should be at twenty-five percent. And that's correct, however, there are some key factors that happen annually. And, uh, the most important being that, yes, sales tax is generally behind two months. So we get the July payment in September, we get the August payment in October, and so on. Um, so we'll never get a true twenty-five percent unless our revenues are completely exceeding what we anticipate. That goes for property tax as well. Property tax is at zero right now. And we will not receive, um, we do receive two semi-annual payments. And generally, we get the first payment in December or January. And so we'll see, um, that with the mid-year budget review. So those are just a few reasons why revenues are only at fourteen percent. It's nothing at this point in time to be concerned about. It is normal. Expenditures, just an overall view, and I will go into more detail on a couple of other slides. But expenditures, we adopted at eighteen point seven million, and we have spent four point one to date. So as you can see, we're very, very good at spending money. We're really close to our twenty-five percent. So just to, um, if you look at this slide in comparison to the financial report. I tried to break it down a little bit different, just to give you a little different picture. Um, the revenues that are shown here are the top ten revenue, um, anticipated top ten revenues for the year. So that's based on how they went in the budget, the top ten by budget. So as you can see, sales tax is the highest performing revenue, and that's at four point eight million. And, and we've brought in a little over a million dollars with just June, I mean, July and August. So in sales tax, we're at twenty-one percent. That for us isn't good nu- good news, because, um, we were anticipating a four percent decrease. Unfortunately, we're still at that four percent increase. I say. I say unfortunately, we hoped that it would go up, but we're, we're happy that so far it hasn't, it hasn't dropped any higher because after we printed the budget, we didn't, um, anticipate and get some news that it could be as much as a 13% decrease. And in the first two months, we're not seeing that yet. So this is positive news that, um, the, the sales tax has come in good for the first two payments. Property taxes, as I mentioned, that goes both for property tax and property tax in lieu. Uh, we budgeted 3.8 million and 3.2 million. And again, that doesn't come in until December or January, so we don't have anything to report at this time. Sales tax, Measure H, it works the same as the regular sales tax. Um, we're at 265,107 dollars and I apologize because I was so concerned about the other sales tax that that is just the July payment and I, I forgot to go back and add in the August payment. But when we put that August payment there, that puts us back at about the 20%, so we still look good in sales tax overall. Rent for, um, land, that is generally, um, we're anticipated to bring in $743,000 and we collect this, um, it, we don't always collect it the same, but the rent is paid to, uh, by the enterprise funds, to the general fund, and we are taking it out on a monthly basis, and so that's why we're at the 25%. Permits are extremely high at this point in time and, um, that is good news. We are definitely paying attention to that number. If it continues in this manner, then we will be bringing a budget amendment to council because if you remember, with this increase, we would also have to offset that by our consultant costs, and so we would also need to bring in an expenditure. Um, but we are seeing this for various reasons. Our, our Community Economic Development Director and our Fire Chief discussed, um, this increase with the developers. And as I mentioned in the staff report, they're, they're not really seeing a slowdown due to COVID. It's kind of the opposite effect for us. We haven't had an interruption. We do have a lot of people in the Bay Area that because they could telecommute and not have to drive to the city every day, they're purchasing homes here and relocating because they, uh, don't have to, they no longer have to commute. They could just do everything over the phone or over the computer. So we have an influx from that. In addition to that, um, we didn't have the inventories or the developers didn't have the inventories at year end, and now the inventories are flexed. So that's, um, showing that significant increase as well. Uh, I'm not sure if that's going to last throughout the year, but it is something that, uh, we will continue to monitor. Franchise fees, those are collected on a quarterly basis beginning in October, and that's why there's zero revenue, um, brought in at this point. Uh, TOT, it is the same. We charged for the first quarter in October, and so you'll see those revenues coming in in October. Uh, the school police grants is at 0% and it's because it hasn't been, uh, built out at this point in time. And then subdivision engineer review inspection, that kind of goes hand in hand with permits. We're seeing an increase there. This is, um, for reviews of new projects. And the biggest two projects when I was reviewing this that are causing this $89,000 increase are, we did have a Los Banas self-storage project and a project with stone-filled homes, and that's why we're seeing that 45% increase. But, um, again, that will be monitored the same as the permits. So just to dive into the sales tax a little bit, just to give you a better idea of, um, what's happening. The, the CDTFA, which used to be known as the Board of Equalization, changed a little bit of the way that they paid, uh, their first, the monthly payments. So the first payment that we get is an estimate or an advance. Um, they used to estimate that based on different information, but now what they tried to go back and actually base it on historical information to make it closer to actuals and dollar amounts that we've received in the past. So this first number and why you see that increase of $37,000 is strictly an estimate and does not take into consideration, um, the, the different programs that the governor put in place, basically the tax deferral. Um, it would not take that into account. We're just getting paid on an estimate. August payment is a little bit different. It still gets paid on an estimate, um, but it also is on the current distribution process during the month. So it's, it's based on an estimate of the, the reports that they have received. So that's why you see that decrease. And then the third payment, which we haven't received yet, uh, the September payment would essentially be a true-up payment. So once that September payment is received, we'll have a better idea of how the first quarter ended. But as I mentioned, it's not coming in too bad. Over the same time last year, we're down $25,000, which is not significant, um, but it is in line with what we've budgeted. So as you can see, um, fiscal year 20, they're, what we actually brought in was 4.8 million and what we budgeted was 4.8 million. The reason why those are so identical is because we had actually, if you could look at the lower, um, note here where it says fiscal 2020 actual was $312,000 less than budgeted, is because our estimated amount that we thought we would bring in was the 5.1 million and this 4% decrease is based on that. So we're still cautious, we're still watching it. Um, any changes, if they're significant, will be brought to council immediately. If they're in line, um, with what we're anticipating, then we'll just bring them back at mid-year. Expenditures, um, this is broken up in your staff report by, um, non-staffing and staffing. Um, but here I just grouped all the departments together so you can have an overview of what was happening. And like I said before, just a little bit different way, um, to view it. Overall, operating costs are on target. Personnel is low. Um, one of the reasons for that is because we froze positions at the beginning of the year because we were being cautious of, um, how sales tax revenue may have come in. So if a, if a position was vacant, we froze it and we also furloughed, um, recreation positions specifically. There was a police, or I'm sorry, an admin position that was furloughed and then, um, two public works positions that were not recreation and one police position that were frozen because they weren't filled at that time. These are things that we're looking at and we'll talk about later in the presentation, but we are beginning to bring those positions back in. And so I'll get into more detail on that. But that's, um, that and the issues that we have with the police department staffing, which seem to be panning out a little bit better, is the reason why we're only at 19%. Supplies and services are at 30% with, um, no concern. There are a lot of things that we charge out like IT services and fleet management at the beginning of the year, so that tends to make that high, that number a little bit higher. Capital outlay, um, generally includes equipment purchases or large projects that are done throughout the year. Um, in the beginning of the year, we're busy writing the RFPs and, you know, submitting them, and so these things generally pick up, um, mid-year or towards the end of the year. Um, but 18% is still a pretty good place to be. Debt services, uh, this is the one small loan that we, internal loan that we still have, uh, between the general fund and the fire fund and the building fund that gets paid into the water, um, fund. And we don't make that payment out until the end of the year. Uh, this is the only debt we currently have and the balance after this year, it will actually be only 403,000 dollars. And then the contingency fund, we usually do not try to touch this and the $10,000 that we do have here are monies that we have used that will actually be reimbursed by CARES funding. And once they are, they will be reallocated to the appropriate account. So we could actually see that number decrease over time. So the total expenditures that we have in the budget are just over 18 million and we've spent approximately 4 million, which puts us at 23%, which again, overall is on track with where we should be. So moving on to Measure P, um, just to give a quick overview, the revenues, uh, for Measure P, these are sales tax revenues, so it falls in line with the same thing I spoke with the general fund. Uh, it's only two months of payments. This is only reflecting one. Um, and we are on track with that. Expenditures for fire are on track as well as, uh, police. Landscape and lighting district, districts, I just kind of lumped them all together so you can see where they're at. There's no reason to be concerned. Um, all of these numbers are for good reason, including projects that have not been completed yet, like landscape and irrigation in Ranchwood and, um, Somerset, Stone Creek, some of the lower numbers that you see here, like Somerset's at 10% and it's because we have landscape and irrigation projects that haven't been taken care of yet, um, and will throughout the year. And like I said, this is just an early picture and a lot of things are in the process of, um, beginning the project at this time and will get completed a little bit later on. And I did forget to mention that revenues for lighting and landscape districts are assessed on property tax bills, so those are received in December or January with property taxes. Enterprise funds, a quick summary, um, the water fund revenues appear to be high and that's, it actually goes along with the permits that were high in the general fund and this is because of connection fees. And so we'll see, um, that with the water fund and the wastewater fund and why there's an increase there. Expenditures are low. Again, it's usually because of, um, projects that need to be done in that fund and/or equipment that needs to be purchased and that could be said with both the water fund and the wastewater fund as well as, uh, the airport fund and the solid waste fund. So everything's looking pretty status quo. There's not anything to be concerned about here in the enterprise funds. So personnel costs, as I mentioned before, um, at the end of the last fiscal year, we did furlough several positions. Uh, four of those full-time positions were included in this year's budget. Two were reinstated as of November 1st, um, just this past week. Um, those remaining recreation positions that were furloughed will be reinstated when we're able, and by that I mean because of the pandemic. So when we are allowed to do recreation programs again, we will bring those positions back. Hopefully, we have enough time to know that we're getting close to that so we can get them back up and running. And the programs started with the release of us being able to. So we're watching that, but without being able to have a full recreation department, um, we don't see that. There's a reason to bring those two positions back at this time. And two part-time positions that were temporarily, temporarily frozen were also reinstated beginning November 1st. Um, those are both in public works. One was the graffiti abatement position that we had just created and one was an ongoing calorie cycle position. Um, the short-term hiring freeze also included three full-time positions, as I previously mentioned, two in the public works, um, department, which are both maintenance positions, and one in the police department, which is an admin clerk position, and those are both reinstated. I do believe that we may be going through recruitment process for those, but they were reinstated or able to recruit beginning November 1st. And again, all these positions were built out in the budget even though they were furloughed or frozen to see if the budget can sustain them. Um, because we do not feel that we have a decrease in sales tax at this time, we feel that it is appropriate to reinstate these positions and we will continue to monitor the other positions, which currently only include part-time positions. Uh, a lot of the part-time positions that were excluded also have to do with the recreation department. So I'm going kind of fast. If you have any questions, do feel free to stop me. Um, but just to touch on the CARES funding allocation, um, again, these, the, the CARES funding are for items that were not budgeted, so it was for things that we didn't anticipate, um, because of the pandemic. And so those are for expenses incurred between March, um, 1, so last year's budget and December 30th of this year. We have received through September 30th, 182,074 dollars of, um, the total amount, which is just over $500,000. Excuse me. Um, we did use this to reimburse personnel costs. Uh, there were some overtime for police and fire that we were allowed to reimburse. Um, when we first, when the pandemic first hit, we did put a lot of people on rotating schedules, so we called it COVID admin leave. Um, and it, they were either in a work-from-home scenario or an on-call scenario and the CARES funding paid for, um, that. We also have done things like purchased new computers, webcams, um, the ability to have meetings, uh, teleconference like we are now, so there's a cost with the go-to meeting. That's all reimbursed through, uh, the CARES funding. Also supplies, anything from hand sanitizers to hand wipes to gloves, um, something as simple as that and, and something as much as the Plexiglas that you'll see, especially if you come into City Hall, it covers the countertops. So we have a barrier between the employees and the customers. And then also each employee has Plexiglas at their cubicles to ensure, um, because we can't social distance them, that they're protected. So, um, we have been reimbursed for that as much. Also, excuse me. In addition to that, um, when we put together the, the CARES funding plan, we put community programming in there and that included a residential hardship program that allowed the city to pay for, uh, residents of Los Banas that had problems paying either their rent, mortgage, or utility bills, including PG&E and even the city water bill. If they can prove to us that their hardship was due to COVID. And so we did, um, also in line with that, we did a small business grant along the same lines. It was for small businesses that were losing business or having ongoing costs that they couldn't afford because of COVID. So if either one could, could prove that their hardship was due to COVID, the city would, um, assist them. The first round, um, of both programs, the first round, we received 17 applications for the residential hardship program. Um, four were awarded and that's because those four met the qualifications. Um, we, for the first round of small business, we received three applications and all three businesses were awarded, um, the grant program. We had a second round that closed, uh, just this past Friday on October 30th. So far, well, so far, we actually received 22 residential applications and two small business, but we're still in the reviewing process. So I don't have a number for you at this time, but I'd be happy to bring it back at a later date to let you know how many people that we were able to help, um, from the second round. And, and the reason we refloated it is because we felt that there were still more people out there. Uh, let's just give it a chance, re-advertise. And I can honestly say I don't think that I received any duplicate applications. So what I mean by that is people who applied the first time and didn't get it, didn't reapply. It was all new applications. So that's good news and we're in the process of reviewing them. So hopefully, um, we can get those checks out in the next week or two. And so with that, we have, we're way on our way of spending the full $500,000 that CARES funding provided. If we don't spend it by December 30th, then we have to give it back to the state, but believe me, that is not going to happen. Um, we have been reporting regularly and our next report is not due until January and by that report, we will have to have all funds expended. So it was a good program and thankfully, um, it was definitely something that, that the city needed. So, um, that's pretty much my presentation. Um, in the coming months, the things that the finance department are working on is the, the audit for the fiscal year 2020. We're actually doing that this week. The auditors were physically in the building, um, yesterday and today. Um, they will be doing the rest of it, um, by telecommunications, but so far I've seen all the checkboxes and we're looking good. I don't think that we should have any issues with that financial audit. Um, they'll bring a report back to council most likely in January, um, just to give an update on where we are. CARES funding reporting, as I mentioned, the final report is due in January to the Department of Finance. Um, the audit report and financials, like I just said, will be brought in January, hopefully, if not February. And then mid-year budget review. This is usually based on when we receive property taxes. So if we get the property tax in December, we'll likely bring the mid-year review to, to council in February. If we get it in January, that'll probably be pushed back to March. And then finally, we'll be working on next year's budget, um, beginning in March and completing in June, hopefully with the council's approval. So that's all I have for tonight and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Sonia, so much for the presentation. I kind of liked this. You're, you're eating away at my project list. Between you and Mark, you've taken out like three, uh, items. You're eating away at my project list. Between you and Mark, you've taken out like three items, so that's good.
Oh, that's great.
With this, I'm going to go down the roll and see Mr. Freya. Do you have any questions?
No, no questions. Just congratulations for excellent management in difficult times.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Santos?
No questions, Sonia, but thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
No questions. And Sonia, thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have no questions at this time. And again, thank you. And I'll be referring to this when we go through the project list.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, item number eleven, discussion regarding future city council meeting format. I guess we're gonna go to Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure how much of this is me, but at the last meeting on October twenty-first, the council considered a similar item regarding meeting format. As you're aware, as we're experiencing this evening, it is evening now. The council has transitioned as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The council has transitioned to this online meeting format. The purpose of this agenda item this evening, as was with the October twenty-first item, was to give the council the opportunity to provide direction to staff regarding future meeting format. Whether or not we, the council's desire was to continue with this online format, move to the council chambers, or move to a hybrid sort of option where we might be in the council chambers and have either some council members and/or staff participate via the online format or phone or some other remote opportunity. So that's all I really have this evening, Mayor. Again, really looking for discussion amongst you as the council and direction from you as the council to move, as we move forward with consideration of the meeting format. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, you know, staff has done a wonderful job attempting to transition. And for the most part, it works, but then we have, you know, reverb issues. We have bounce back. We have, you know, sound problems. And I think, you know, my opinion is that we need to get back to a a meeting with proper PPE and so we can talk to each other. This is okay, but it's not great. And so I'd like to hear from the rest of the council to see what they say. And then we can go from there and maybe hopefully formulate some type of direction. But my preference is, you know, meeting under the COVID restrictions with proper PPE. Mr. Freya?
I agree in person with proper COVID restrictions is fine with me.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. It's just been, it's something I've been brought to my attention that, you know, besides, I personally voted to do, we could do hybrid or be inside the council chambers because due to these being my last couple of meetings, I wanted to, you know, kind of get that experience again. But due to the fact that, you know, there's, you know, my wants and what other people, that there are other people involved, like staff and whatnot, and everyone's health conditions, I will say that I would prefer that we keep it online so that we are able to just allow everyone to serve at their leisure, I suppose. So that's my vote.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I don't mind getting back into the Almodias, but you know where I stand with the PPE.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I know that the staff has made tremendous strides to protect themselves at City Hall. We don't have those kinds of protections in our chamber. And I've known for a while that we have some of our city employees, and I hope that the council would take this into consideration, who do have pretty significant medical issues. We've not even taken them into consideration or even thought about them. And it's not just about us, it's about all the people who are involved, who have to come to these meetings. So I'm asking the council, please, let's consider them. If we have employees who have serious respiratory problems and other medical conditions, and some of us who sit on council have issues medically too. It may not be the preferred place to be online, but and I want to thank you, Veronica, for being open and honest about wanting to get back to the dais, being that it's your last meeting coming forward here, maybe not, if not this one, maybe the next one. But we're in a serious pandemic right now and we don't know where it's going. And I just think that until we're sure about where our county stands as far as its color code, where the state stands and all that they want us to do, that we need to make sure that everybody is safe and not have a personal agenda about trying to get back into the chambers. Yes, we have issues here, but we've had issues in the council chambers with audio problems. And we fixed them there. Tonight, we had an unusual night. But I feel very strongly that having meetings online at this particular time is the way to go. And there's no need for us to have any kind of hybrid meetings or anything like that. So that's my request for the council, is that we keep the meetings as they stand right now with the virtual. And when things are better in our community, for people to go back out into these public meetings, for the council to go back out in these public meetings, for our staff who have medical issues to feel safe, then that would be the time to move forward. So I want to be a champion for them too. And Veronica, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think there's any personal agenda with anyone. I think what it is, is we want to get the council opinion. We want to find out, you know, if we want to do this or not. And I think the public expects us to discuss this. And so whatever the outcome is the outcome.
I don't really feel that the public, I don't know, I haven't heard from the public about any opinions about us getting back to the chambers. So this is on us. I don't know that they have that expectation of us right now as a council to get back to the chamber. Because we're, as long as we're able to conduct our meetings, have the appropriate reports given to us and make the appropriate decisions, it shouldn't matter at this point under COVID whether we're in the chambers or doing it virtually. If we couldn't see each other on camera and have decision-making processes the way that we're doing now, that might be a consideration to take, you know, take that into consideration. But at this particular time, I can't see just having it about the council. We have to think about other people who are involved in this as well.
Well, look at your screen. I mean, the majority of the people are not on. And I don't see this as a proper way to conduct the meetings. And as I said, many other municipalities are going back to the live meetings. And, but again, I would like to see us go back. But if the support is not there, the support is not there. And I understand that. So I look at this and I don't see us as conducting business as normal and real as we could if we were talking to each other. We've done it in the past and now it's, it's, it might be time to get back again. And there's always someone that's going to have some reason why they don't want to come. And I think they're experiencing this, you know, all over. We're not going to get a hundred percent compliance because people are always going to say that there may be some type of reason why they do not want to be in person. I understand that. So, but I'm willing to go with the majority. I mean, that's exactly what it is. So I'm going to call this question and then we'll see where it goes. And I'll do a roll call. But again, I would not do it without proper PPE. And if that's not the case, then that's not part of the question that I'm calling for tonight. So I'm going to go down the roll call and I'm going to say, how many of you want to meet with proper PPE in person? And that's what I'm asking. Then the second part of that was, do we want to do a hybrid where the people that want to meet can meet at the council chambers and the people that don't want to can stay home? So the first question is, Mr. Freya, would you like to meet in person with proper PPE?
As long as everyone is compliant, yes.
As long as everyone is wearing proper PPE?
Correct.
Okay, I'll clarify that. Mrs. Santos? Would you like to meet if everyone is wearing proper PPE?
Yes, I would like to meet, but I also want to take in mind the fact that everyone's health. So yes, I would like to meet, but if everyone's health is not properly protected, I do not wish to meet.
And that is part of the question. If we're going to meet in person, then it would be only with proper, the only people that would be allowed to be there would be proper PPE individuals. And that's what we're voting on. Is that correct, Veronica?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Freya, that's what you understand?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I would like to meet, but not under your terms.
Well, not my terms. I'm talking about the council. Okay, so you're a no. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
No.
Okay, and I'm a yes with proper PPE. Now let's go to the second part of the question. Mr. Freya, would you consider, you're a yes, would you consider a hybrid?
I don't like the idea of a hybrid. The fact that some people would be in person, the other would be online, I don't think would be, I don't like that idea at all.
Okay, so that's a no. Mrs. Santos?
Yes, I would consider a hybrid.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, I mean, yes or no? Or are you abstaining?
All abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
No, I prefer not to have a hybrid because I think it needs to be one way. And of course, you've already got my vote on the first half.
Okay, and I would be a yes just to try and ease us back in. All right, that fails. Actually, a tie with that. So I'm just going to make the call that we're going to stay at the virtual meetings because we can't get a consensus as to do this. Because the only way we could do it is three of us said yes, that they would come with proper PPE. No, one would not come with proper PPE. And no, and one would not come under any circumstance. So we don't have consensus on this. The question has been answered. If there is no consensus, then we're going to have to stay at virtual meetings.
Virtual meetings are okay with me, Mayor.
Okay. All right, that's the end of that discussion. All right, let's go on to item twelve. Notice and announcement of vacancies for the following commission committees. Director Maloney?
Okay, there are three vacancies on the Airport Advisory Commission. And there are three two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. There are three vacancies on the Economic Development Advisory Commission. There are three two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. We have four vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Commission. One unexpired term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And three two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. We have five vacancies on the Planning Commission. There's one vacancy, a four-year term in District One, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. In District Two, there's a one-two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. In District Three, there's one two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. In District Four, there's one four-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And there's an at-large term, one two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. There are two vacancies on the Tree Commission. There are two two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. There are three vacancies on the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. And there are three two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And lastly, there are two vacancies on the Measure P Committee. There are two three-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And there's no action to be taken. This is just an infermation, only. And once the new council is seated, we'll be coming back to make appointments of council members to sit on the committees to recommend appointment.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, let's go to item thirteen, COVID-19 status update.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm going to read from a couple of reports. One that I received and then the other from the county dashboard. According to Johns Hopkins Center for Health Security, this is the University of Johns Hopkins and their Public Health School. They're reporting that the US CDC reported nine-point-two million total cases of COVID-19, of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-three deaths, including eighty-six thousand new cases reported yesterday, which is the fourth highest daily total to date. And again, on a national level, daily COVID-19 incidence continues to increase. And again, this is according to Johns Hopkins. It continues to increase and set new records with an average of eighty-four thousand twenty-nine new cases per day. The US is now exceeding the previous peak in late, that was in late July, by more than twenty percent. And again, according to Johns Hopkins, it's more than two-point-five times the first peak that we experienced in mid-April. So set that aside. So from the county dashboard, Los Banos has one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven cases. Merced has had three-thousand-six-hundred-and-nine. Atwater, one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-four, and Livingston, nine-hundred-and-sixty-four. Sorry, let me go back to the dashboard. Sorry about that. In terms of deaths in the county, one-hundred-and-sixty-one deaths and a total of nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty confirmed COVID cases. So again, just an update from those two sources. We do have our two testing sites in Los Banos.
uh, in Los Banos, one at the Community Center. It's operated by Golden Valley Health Center. Um, then the second site, uh, at the Fairgrounds, uh, funded by the State of California, operated by Verily. Um, just on, on a personal level, uh, I went, um, and was tested, uh, yesterday at the Fairgrounds. Um, and apparently I'm a regular customer, uh, because when I went to show my ID, uh, the nice person, uh, doing the testing said, I don't need your ID, you're a regular, I recognize you, so. Anyway, uh, get tested, get tested often. Um, it's, it's, it's important that we get tested. In addition to that, you know, the, the standard public health, um, advisory, wash your hands, get your flu shot, uh, is important as we continue to, um, move through the, the pandemic. Um, that's all I really have, mayor, um, on COVID-nineteen.
What's the turnaround time for testing?
Um, and so two weeks ago, a- again, being a regular customer at the Verily Fairgrounds site, uh, two weeks ago, it was, I think, two days, two to three days. Um, I tested Tuesday, uh, it's only been a day. Um, I would expect probably tomorrow to receive my, my results. So I think we're in the two-to, two-to-three-day timeframe. Uh, at the Verily site, um, I, I, I honestly don't know what the turnaround side, time is for the, uh, for the other site here in town, there.
So, uh, are we, do we still have the lowest infection rate in the county?
On a per capita basis?
Yes.
Question, let me, let me check the, the dashboard, uh, per thousand residents. Uh, shoot, I'm sorry, mayor. Uh, yes, we, we, we are at thirty-point-nine per thousand residents. Um, and it goes to a high of sixty-six-point-eight per thousand for Livingston. Um, and then Witten is at sixty-point-three per thousand. And then Delhi, uh, unincorporated communities of Merced County. Uh, Delhi's at sixty-one-point-one, Dos Palos at fifty-two-point-seven. But yes, mayor, um, the city of Los Banos does have the lowest, uh, infection rate per thousand residents.
Well, that's good to hear, and, and you know, it's my belief that with proper PPE and, and social distancing and, uh, and adhering to what, uh, the COVID-nineteen, uh, uh, professionals have said that to, to keep the rate down, uh, has worked in Los Banos, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And people are getting on with their daily lives, and I think that's more important. Okay, any other comments on COVID-nineteen status update? Okay, let's go on to item fourteen, review of current projects list. Alex?
Oh, okay, um, staff report. So this is an informational item only. Uh, the, the, the mayor has requested the opportunity to review, uh, a list of current projects. Um, again, no, not requesting any action on any particular items. Uh, primarily informational. Um, staff is available for, for questions regarding projects, but, um, I think I'll just hand it over to the mayor, uh, at this point to run through the list, uh, list of projects.
Thank you, Alex. You know, as I stated before, council and, and staff and, uh, and those listening, uh, i- i- in, uh, yeah, i- i- in other, in other arenas, every council member has a great idea, they come with a set of skills, and they wanna see things accomplished. People don't get elected just to sit on the dais. They come to make sure that maybe they, their ideas can be implemented and maybe convince the council, uh, that this is a good idea and with teamwork. So they've all come to the council with great ideas and plans. But we all realize that as soon as we get on the council, that if there's no money, there's no way to fund it. Projects, as good as they are, will be, be stalled or disappear. Operating on the premise that you fix your own problems within your community, find and fund your own projects, and keeping your money at home has been the basis for the list I am about to, uh, to go over. Uh, this council has done an excellent job, uh, setting the stage for what I'm about to, uh, to talk about. And I can't thank you enough for, for what you've done and staff for helping to find the money to complete these projects. So the first one I wanna talk about is the splash pad. And so where we're at is we're gonna have site selection in either January or February. And, uh, we're gonna let the contract, we're gonna have the contract out by, for construction at the start of, uh, August twenty-twenty-one. Staff is currently reviewing the recommended three sites for the splash pad. This includes the citizens' comments that have been received through the virtual meetings. After staff has reviewed the information and the associated cost estimates, the site analysis will be brought to the council for review and ultimate site selection. So council, you'll be involved, or not be involved, you'll make the, uh, site selection from the three, uh, sites that, uh, have been, uh, referred to you. And, uh, also, uh, the construction is gonna start in August of twenty-twenty-one. Now, again, this all depends upon COVID-nineteen and, and where we're at at the time. Uh, but, uh, but we, but all the projects I'm talking about, we have the funding, we have a funding stream to take care of this. So this is not pie in the sky, and that's what I'm really proud of. So let's go on to the next project, and that's the new hospital. Alex and I have been meeting with representatives of Sutter Hospital to discuss the construction and location of a new hospital facility, facility in Los Banos. These meetings need to continue with Sutter until plans for a new hospital are finalized, or if we need to seek out another source for medical care in Los Banos. Uh, Sutter is, is saying that, that, that yes, they wanna invest in the, uh, in, in Los Banos with a new medical facility. Uh, they are working on the purchase of land. But, uh, as you know, hospitals are not built overnight, they're not built in a year, they're not built in two years. So this is something the, uh, the council, if they see this as a continued priority, they have to continue to work on it, uh, with the, the next new council. So, uh, they've been very cordial, but, uh, but it needs to move along. Uh, or we need to seek out another source for medical care in Los Banos. Uh, Dan Nelson, are you all still on the line? Dan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
I can, uh, let me, uh, uh, I have Dan Nelson with me tonight, who's going to discuss a little bit about the museum. Uh, currently, Dan Nelson and his team have met with the city manager to discuss the possible, uh, possible location of a new museum, and they have several sites that they're looking at. When that is confirmed, it will be announced, and Dan is here this evening to talk about the next steps, including a preliminary design for a new museum. Uh, Dan, you wanna tell us a little bit more?
Yeah, thank, thank you, mayor, and good evening, city council. I know this is getting late, so I'll make this brief. But as background, um, over the past several years, members of this, uh, Millikan Museum Society have been developing a plan, uh, to build a larger museum to better tell the story of historic Los Banos. The current museum building was constructed in nineteen-fifty-four. And, and that building served us well for over sixty-five years, but we've outgrown it and now have a broader and a grander vision of what the museum can be. Um, the society is a nonprofit, five-oh-one-C-three organization, and we partnered with a couple of local water agencies on the project. And I'm really excited that we're close to distributing a request for proposal for the ni- uh, initial design. Uh, the, the society's very fortunate, and the museum's very fortunate, that we have enjoyed really good support from the city of Los Banos, Merced County, and certainly the local community. And, uh, in particular, at this time, I wanna take the opportunity to thank Mayor Walta and city manager, Terasis, and planner Stacy Souza for their ongoing support and their assistance that we put this, uh, plan for the project together. Um, Mayor Walta asked me to give you a brief introduction to the project, and I, and I thanks her, you, for the opportunity to do that. I, I really sincerely believe that this project has the potential to be a huge asset uh, for the city of Los Banos and the region, and certainly complements the notion of Los Banos being a historic city. Uh, I, thanks again for this opportunity and your ongoing support, and we look forward to working with you as we move forward with the project.
Dan, let me ask a couple of questions, and, and that is, uh, 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 basically that, uh, are the funds available once the design is, uh, is completed? For the construction?
Yeah, like I say, we, we've had, uh, considerable support from, uh, uh, the local community, have, who have actually, um, motivated us to, to move forward with this project and, uh, and actually are, are, are ready to go. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really confident in the funding sources and, and it's really assisted us in partnering with the local water agencies. The concept is for the museum to be on the ground floor, and we're looking at, you know, a substantial eight-to-ten-thousand square, uh, building, square-foot building, uh, for the museum, and then upstairs, uh, some, uh, offices for various, uh, water agencies that, that wanna partner with the project.
Thank you. So, so it, let me, council, let me give you a sequence of what we need to do. Um, Alex and, uh, and the, uh, uh, the city manager and, and, uh, and Dan and his committee are gonna work out a site selection from, uh, several, uh, uh, sites that they've been looking at. Then that will be brought to the council, uh, uh, and then we need to talk about a sale price for the land. Then we need to go out to the special districts to, to see if that's okay with them for the sale of the land and the purchase price. Because that money is distributed among the special districts that are involved in the land from the state of California. And so, for an example, if the property sells for a hundred thousand dollars, then, uh, yeah, Merced Community College will get a percentage. The, uh, the, uh, uh, Merced County Office of Education will get a percentage. These are all special districts. And so, so that process will take place over the next few months. And Dan, I would encourage you to set up the meetings, get your, uh, uh, preliminary design and work with Stacy, uh, to find out which property's gonna work the best for you. I, I know you have an idea of the property that you would like. So, uh, so let's get that in, in gear and, uh, and, and put all these pe- uh, puzzle pieces together so we can start this project, so.
Well, thanks again for your support, and right now we're targeting, um, as soon as this coming Monday to release our request for proposal on the, uh, preliminary design for the, for the project.
Fantastic, just keep Stacy and Alex in, in the loop. And, uh, and, uh, so, uh, so we can make sure that there's not a delay, uh, when it comes right down to it after the, uh, uh, the initial, uh, design is, uh, is taking place. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you for being on, Dan. Okay, let's go on to the next project, and that's a safety security glass at City Hall. That is going to be out to bid, and the second council meeting in November for award. The construction, it will start in December, and the construction will take forty days. So I'm really excited about this, it started over a year ago, and it's gonna be a safe, um, uh, a, a, a safe, uh, uh, place for staff. And, uh, and we'll have a nice-looking, um, uh, panels that will be put up in, uh, in place of the plexiglass that is there now. It'll serve as a COVID barrier, plus it'll also be a, uh, safety security barrier, and the front will be redesigned. So, uh, it's, uh, it's a good project. And again, all the projects that I'm mentioning, these are things that are already in place, and the money's been approved by our council, so, uh, we're in the budget. Now, uh, Sonia, thank you, uh, for the update on the halftime graffiti person. I know that was-
Mr. Mayor?
-a while?
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt you, please? I think you forgot the-
Do not interrupt, go ahead.
I think you forgot the dog park.
Oh, did I do that?
Yes.
How could I forget that? I am so sorry. Let me finish with the graffiti and I'll go back to the dog park. Um, so the halftime graffiti person, uh, Alex, that person is on duty now, working?
That's my understanding, yes, mayor.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Sonia, for the update. Okay, let's go on, let's go back to the dog park. Now, the dog park is, is something, again, that's being constructed now. Uh, the February or March for completion, it may be as soon as January. Uh, bearing setbacks in COVID. Uh, they wanna allow sixty days for growth of the vegetation. And the dog park is in its growth period with the benches and the trash bins that have been installed. The park is really starting to take shape, and the facility should be completed, including the turf-grown period in January. So they might wanna give it just a little extra time. So in, um, in February, uh, or March, uh, it will be open to the public. Mrs. Lewis, did you wanna comment?
Um, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanted you to make sure you didn't forget the dog park.
Oh, no, I'm not gonna forget the dog park. Thank you for the correction. Okay, let's go on to the city camera system. Uh, that project is moving forward, IT is working on equipment purchase, uh, that will be able to, uh, to grow into. It's very important that, uh, along with, uh, uh, Chief Breezy, that they buy the proper equipment. And, and then, uh, the council then can decide, this future council can decide whether to allocate more funds each year to grow the system. What we're finding, and from what I hear from, uh, Chief Breezy, the police department, is that many of the crimes that are being solved are through video surveillance. And, and if we can have at one point a citywide camera system, or as many cameras as we can have, it's gonna be much better, and people are gonna know that, uh, that, uh, that eyes are on them. And the, um, uh, it also includes license plate readers. Uh, it includes, uh, a tracking of citizens as they cross the street. And so not only is it a safety per, uh, procedure, it is a, uh, a process to where if there is an incident, it could be viewed before our officers even get there. So this is a good project, and we've already set aside funds for this. And, uh, and hopefully this will grow over the years.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question, please?
You sure can, I'll see if I can answer it.
Yes, on the camera system, um, is that, uh, starting in the downtown area? And how far will it go out as we expand on that?
Well, I'm gonna leave that to the police chief. Uh, yes, it has started in the downtown area. And then the, then the police chief will be picking intersections that he feels, so to speak, are hotspots, and, and then the cameras will go there first. So the, the, the problem that we're having is, again, we have to have the wireless communication for it. So they're, uh, they're redoing the fiber backbone and the, uh, and the transmitters and receivers, so we can have the proper signal and not take up all the bandwidth in the city. Anything else, Mrs. Lewis? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go on to one-fifty-two improvements. The syncing of the stoplights is in the design process with Caltrans now for one-fifty-two, and it will start construction in October of twenty-twenty-one. This is CMAC money and, uh, and through MCAG, so we're partnering with them. Caltrans is working on the other areas of intersection improvements and channelizers to be placed on the east and the west end of town. Now, those channelizers are those, uh, fluorescent sticks, so to speak, that stick up out of the, um, uh, out of the roadway, and they direct traffic so people can't make a U-turn in the middle of the street, and they can't make left-hand turns, uh, uh, into, uh, into other businesses. But these are gonna be on a limited basis where Caltrans feels it will do the most good to keep the traffic flow going. The city of Los Banos- The city of Los Vanos, uh, uh, in conjunction with Caltrans advisement, uh, has also installed the new parking striping on the side streets intersections retrusted by Caltrans and this has been completed. We also have 152 safety committee meetings, which will continue until this project is completed and then as needed. So we're very fortunate to have another director uh that has continued with direct, District 10 Director, who has continued with the safety committee meetings each month, of which Alex and I, the police chief, the fire chief, all participate in and uh, plus MCAG. So what we're doing is trying to get the most bang for our buck and, and uh increase the improvements on 152. The sinking of the um, uh, of the, the stoplights is going to be huge because this is the latest technology. It may be all wireless, they may do some trenching. And uh, what's going to happen is after the traffic flow is determined, with a touch of a button, they can change the sinking of the lights. Now this is huge because if, if uh, if, if the current configuration doesn't work, they're a, they're able to modify this. And, and basically what we're trying to do is we're using CMAC money because it's through carbon emissions and reducing carbon emissions and clean air. And this hopefully should help the traffic through, flow through Los Vanos. And please stop me at any time if you have any questions. Now, the Pioneer Road expansion, moving on, um, I'm not going to go over that again because uh, we've already talked about the PSR uh that is currently in Caltrans review and um, and then they'll be bringing back other actions. Uh, the design engineer's phase two scope of work for professional service agreement is scheduled to be brought to the council for review and, and approval at the beginning of this year. Uh, so uh, this project is moving forward and it is a project, it's a good project and I'm glad to see there was support with the council tonight because I can tell you, if we stop this project, Caltrans and MCAG will never give us another dime and that eight million dollars will go away. If there's any other idea of building a bypass, of course, we may need a bypass later on, but that is going to be almost a half a billion dollars at today's money. They will never approve that type of funding. This after, when we get to construction point, is going to be a 45 or 50 million dollar project for the 6.4 miles. And it's, it's something that is, is uh, is going to assist. And if there's any development along uh Pioneer Trail, that tax, those tax dollars will stay within the city of Los Vanos. A bypass will transfer all the tax dollars to the county of Merced. So the council's going to have to make a choice, future council, make a choice if you're going to continue to support this and if you do, uh, then this project will go forward. So let's go on to an MCAG project, a tipping fee study. As I brought forth to you uh months ago, there were dipping, different tipping fees for a ton of garbage throughout Merced County. And Los Vanos and Merced were paying the highest tipping fee. So when asked the question, uh, MCAG was really honest, they said, we don't know how those fees were developed. They go back many, many years and um, and we couldn't uh, they, they couldn't find any record as to why different cities were paying lower rates and different cities were paying higher rates. So I put this item on the agenda, thanks to the council's support that I received. And this uh study will be uh finished in the spring of 2021 to determine what is a fair rate is to dispose of our garbage by the ton. And again, currently there are different rates for different municipalities. Flow control policy. Now this is something else that the council banned together to help me with uh because it was uh, it was uh, uh determined that um, there are only two entities basically that are doing um, uh, a full-fledged recycling and that is the city of Merced, the city of Los Vanos and parts of Merced County, very few parts of Merced County. So what spurred this on is that MCAG had come to um, um, or actually Republic asked for an increase in the recyclables and it was going to cost Los Vanos 360 to 370,000 dollars more over two years for, to dispose of their recyclables, but that, that was only for the cities that were recycling. And like I said, out of the six cities, only two and maybe a quarter of us were doing the recycling and that brings up the whole discussion that we had earlier about strap saddling our residents with the uh, the added costs when other people are not doing this. So uh, we're not the people that are going to be the pickup people all the time. It, it may be a good deal, but I mean, we have to make it fair. So um, so after some discussion with uh, with the, the council members, and again, thank you, uh, I went back and told them, we are not paying that fee and Merced was going to get saddled for over 400,000 dollars. And so the way it came out, MCAG is going to pick up the cost of the recycling services over the next two years and we are going to go on our own merry way uh to uh, and I'll talk about that in uh, in uh, with the flow control. There's going to be a flow control policy that basically says that if Los Vanos wants to go out and they can get a cheaper rate to dispose of their recyclables, they'll be free to do so, as will any other municipality in Merced County. So this was a win-win for us with the tipping fee is a win-win for us with the flow control policy. And by the way, the flow control policy, the additional 380,000 dollars was not, I repeat, not included in these current rates and we would have had to do another 218 process in order to uh, let our citizens know that these rates, our garbage rates were going to go up. Now that's not going to happen. And thanks to Mid Valley and the approval of the contract, hopefully there will be a reduction.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the tipping fees, are you saying that going forward, uh, the city of Los Vanos will not have to pay those fees, that MCAG is picking them up?
Oh, no, I'm talking about the flow control.
Okay.
And that's where the recyclables. And the recyclables were the ones that were going to cost us, just the recyclables, Mrs. Lewis, were going to cost us 360 to 370,000 additional for two years. And that's not going to happen now. MCAG is picking up that cost.
So have, have, since they couldn't find any record on why cities were being charged tipping fees at different rates?
Yeah.
Have, is that an, an item that's still going to be coming forward on their agendas to decide what's going to be done?
That's where the tipping fee study comes in because my, my is, my suggestion was that, and that's where this all originated, that we pay our fair share, but we don't pay more than our fair share. And whatever it costs us, the cost of doing business is the cost of doing business. And basically, uh, not to belabor the tipping fee study, but the only reason I think they could come up with was the fact that um, it costs more for, and I'll give you an example of Dos Palos, uh, who is like nine dollars a ton less than we were, eight to nine dollars a le- a ton less to dump the garbage because they were farther from the disposal site. And so uh, I don't know where the formula came up, it was way, way, way before my time or anyone's time, even in the staff in the city of Los Vanos, of how this was uh originated. But uh, but because of a sheet that was uh, that was placed on, on one of the presentations virtually at MCAG, I noticed these different rates. And, and so that's how all this originated and that's when I came to the council for support. And I wouldn't have carried this forward, but council, uh, council supported me uh, and that's where I need you and the unified council, all the council members uh, to make sure that, that they know that the city of Los Vanos is in sync with uh, uh, with trying to get the best rates that we possibly can. So the tipping fee study is going to determine what's fair, what's an equal rate for everyone. At least that's what I'm hoping and, and I, and when I, at, at the conclusion, I'll talk a little bit why MCAG is so important. So uh, the tipping fee study should be concluded in the spring of 2021 and those, that, that information will be made available to you. Is there anything else, Mrs. Lewis, on that?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the new uh garbage hauling company starts in July of 2021. We've had detailed discussions on it and we're going to be getting a lot more uh contract. Uh, uh, it's a great deal for the city of Los Vanos. It includes disposal site for recyclables, uh, so we won't have to be dependent on anyone else to dispose our recyclables and which will end up saving us money. All new equipment will be purchased with up-to-date telemetry tracking. And again, Mark Fajian, thank you for taking this on, I really appreciate it. Okay, 11th Street Hawk System. Um, that will be replaced with a full stoplight in 2021. I don't have the exact month of completion, but Caltrans will be pulling out the Hawk System that works so well now and will be replacing it with a full stoplight. The uh, signal sinking we talked about on 152 is October of 2021. Walking Trails to Merced College. Uh, design phase is going to take about six months and one year for construction. Measure V Regional Funds will be funding this project and it should take about two years uh for a total completion. And this is another win-win and again, everything I'm talking about is in the design phase or going to be in the construction phase. This is not pie in the sky. This is going to happen because Measure V Funds have already been allocated, as with the Pioneer Trail and we're talking eight to nine, uh, over eight million dollars for these projects to be allocated. That's why uh, begging for this money, once you ask for something, then pulling it back is not such a great idea. So the walking trail is in process. Mark is on this, he started this project and again, in two years will be the total completion, uh, depending upon uh, you know, negotiations with landowners for the, the right of way. The waste disposal site expansion, that is in place. We're moving forward to ensure that there is a disposal site on the west side. Longevity is the key for not having to transport our garbage to the east side of the county, which again, will drive up costs astronomically if we have to transport garbage to Highway 59. So the plan would be to have um, if, if they didn't do this disposals, uh, 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 what would happen is they drive the garbage out to Billy Wright and then they transfer it, they drive it out to Highway 59, which would be um, whi- which would be not good for the citizens of Los Vanos. That's why that uh, MCAG has taken this and they're having uh, this project and we're having weekly meetings uh, with the owners to see if we can ensure that the disposal site and purchased property for that. Uh, very important that this is uh continued and someone is on this in the next coming months. Now, west side bus service to the Bay Area.
Mr. Mayor, um.
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
On the disposal site expansion, um. Uh, for disposal, it's not just Merced County that's disposing uh, garbage and wa- uh, materials there on the site. There are other cities outside of our county that are disposing there as well, aren't they?
They are.
Okay.
And, and let me tell you why that's a good idea, not so good idea. So MCAG has to make a certain amount of money to, to run that facility. And, and, and bringing in tonnage from other areas helps to defray the cost because we need a, a disposal site on the west side. And I don't know if we could survive without some of this tonnage and, and, or else what would the cost be uh, to make up the difference for some of this garbage that's being taken place, that, that's coming in. But it also takes up airspace and, and that's the downside of it, but you can't have it both ways. So it's a good thing that they're making extra money because they're able to make improvements at our waste site facility and to keep it open more days and they, and recently they've increased the hours. So uh, but the downside is it's using airspace. So the happy medium here is to increase the space at the, at Billy Wright and so we'll have a waste disposal site that be able to take in garbage, also maybe process some organics, I'm not sure if they're still going to do that and um, and then um, uh, be able to keep our waste disposal cost down because we'll have a short distance to transport, as will Dustine, Dos Palos on the west side and Saninella. So it's, it's a tricky balancing act, uh, but uh, but they're doing a, a good job of it uh, to make sure that, that ensure the survival of Los Vanos. And that's where uh, the uh, the next mayor has to be on all these projects and of which I'll discuss in just a few minutes. Okay, so let's go on to west side bus service to the Bay Area. We don't know what the uh, post-COVID world is going to look like because of so many people that have uh, been able to uh, uh, to telecommute, but. Again, with your support and, and bringing these things forward to MCAG, we're on track for data collection to can be completed by June of 2021. Questions that will be answered is do we need a dedicated bus service to the Bay Area with um, with public support? Uh, is there ridership to support this type of service from Los Vanos to the Bay Area in a post-COVID environment? Because if we can get them there, then they can take light rail or busing uh, from the drop-off point that uh, that, that they are uh, uh, that would be determined. So this uh, west side bus service uh, uh, to the Bay Area, uh, MCAG has already allocated the money. And again, every project I'm talking about is in place, it's not pie in the sky. And um, and so uh, we should have those results by June of 2021 with, and then it'll be transmitted to us and um, and we'll see what, what we can do to then have um, start the process rolling to, to have uh, bus service and uh, to um, to the Bay Area, which again, could be used with CMAC funds, could be used with uh, with funds for air credits and we will also get uh, those credits that will be assigned if we take vehicle miles traveled, if we reduce those and reduce uh, carbon emissions and PM 2.5. So this is a good deal. This is a good deal, it needs to be done and it's going to be done. So now, let's talk about the MCAG agendas and how important it is to participate in this group. You can see how the overlap of all the projects or majority of the projects I'm talking about is with MCAG. So we need a champion to be at that meeting and that's typically the mayor that uh, that then can report out to the council. Uh, we have a, an MCAG um, uh, agenda item each month uh, to, to talk about some of the projects that are happening. And so MCAG has had a total turnaround in their staff. I'm really proud of the staff of MCAG. They are looking out for the interests of Los Vanos and uh, uh, under the direction of uh, of uh, of, of Stacy, um, oh God, I can't think of her last name now, someone help me out. Uh, what's her new last name? Alex, can you help me? I guess you can.
Gusman.
Gusman. Thank you, thank you. Under the direction of Stacy Guzman, um, uh, well, you know, we, there's been like a total turnaround and, and she has helped in the faci- uh, facilit- uh, facilitation of a lot of these projects, helping us to get money. And so um, the new mayor uh, is uh, is, is paramount in, and uh, in, in keeping up the contact with uh, with MCAG and its members uh, to make. uh to make sure that these projects do not die because they are well on their whale, well on their way to completion. So let's go to downtown revitalization. Well, we've taken one step tonight, and and I'm glad that they, see, this coincided so well with the with the um uh the process of the um uh of the waste disposal or the contract tonight and then uh talking about abandoned buildings. So thank you to all that have helped us pass the P bid. In the future, staff will be bringing forth information on possible new ordinances involving the cleanup of abandoned buildings. And to and that was the first phase that started tonight. Staff is working closely with the Downtown Association in this revitalization project. So the first step that was taken was a P bid. The second step is we're working with abandoned buildings, and staff has been working with the property owners uh to make sure that um that uh that these projects continue. And one building that is boarded up downtown, I was told that the the glass has been ordered, and it uh the project should be completed within the next couple of weeks. So I'm happy to hear that. So Stacy, Alex, uh thank you for what you've done and uh continue to do it, please. So now let's get into some of the fun projects here, the new police station on G Street. December second for the approval for the project management. Construction will start in March of twenty twenty-two and a finished project in late twenty twenty-three. The additional fire station on Ward Road, there's no construction schedule yet that has been set. The Fire Department Training Tower Project bid will be opening, opening is November seventeenth with a council award date scheduled for December second. So good projects that are happening. Um you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna be able to reduce our response times, uh especially with the the Fire Department, uh once we get this uh this uh uh schedule for the new fire station going. Anna Caballero and um and Adam Gray have arranged for five million dollars to be put forth. That's money in the bank that is allocated towards this project. I'm losing my voice. And and so uh we're well on our way for the fire station, but the police station is going to be completed by twenty twenty-three, which is such going to be such a huge benefit uh to the city of Los Vanos and the hiring of uh of police officers. And I will tell you that once we finish with the um uh uh the uh academy and these officers finish their uh their training, we will be about four officers short of a full contingent of officers. Chief Breezy, is that uh pretty much a fair statement?
Yes, Mayor, it's getting close. It's between four and five at that point. But we have a couple, uh we have two ongoing recruitments currently um underway that we're hoping to add to those numbers as well.
Thank you, Chief. Um so I will tell you that um you you know, I don't want to use it's not rocket science, but the chief has had all these strategies in place. He does not hesitate to call in additional help when needed. And through mutual aid, the the Sheriff's Department, the uh uh the C H P and the different police departments around our area are just absolutely wonderful to the city of Los Vanos. I mean, a big shout out to them because they are always there for us with the the help that we need. Now, once we get a full contingent of officers, the um uh the chief then is working on our local gang task force, our local gang um 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 uh group that uh that can then be devoted just to uh gang suppression. But right now, we just don't have the officers. And so uh the chief may or may not be coming back to you for uh for additional help. Uh but he will be going through uh Alex. Uh you know, if at the time, if he feels that he needs something, um he will come forward and talk to the city manager. But uh but but for right now, um we're going to have uh between four or five officers uh short of a full contingent. And when that happens, then we'll be able to devote officers to different areas of um of the um uh of 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 needed areas within the city of Los Vanos. So thank you, Chief Breezy. Thank you, Alex. Um we're um uh it it's not because of of lack of of uh of uh of funds at this point, it's because of lack of bodies. And everyone is looking for uh police officers and good police officers that want to stay in the city of Los Vanos. And so this new um this new police station is going to be a huge shot in the arm to uh for retention, as will a new fire station for our fire department. Public safety is paramount in this community. And I think uh I think the council and staff have have taken that very seriously. And we are working towards a a better police and fire department to make sure that they have the uh the needed equipment and personnel. So thank you to all. So let's go on to solar energy alternative Peninsula Clean Energy. At their first meeting in October, Los Vanos was accepted as a full member of Peninsula Clean Energy. On November nineteenth, uh will be the official swearing-in of our city. Over the year twenty twenty-one, the city will be providing outreach and informational workshops in both English and Spanish about P C E power alternatives. The process for opting out will be fully explained. In January of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, uh maybe February, just depending upon uh upon how uh everything is structured, P C E will start providing power to our residents. And at least at a five percent discount on uh a in all tiers. And um then uh uh incentives for solar, for water heaters, for different ways uh to make your house more energy efficient. Uh these will also, these will be programs provided through uh P C E. So you made this happen, council. All these projects, you made them happen. And I am just so proud of you because again, these are projects that are funded and in the pipeline. Now, residential rental inspections. Now, tonight, that started again. The process will be coming uh to the council in either January or February of twenty twenty-one. Uh rental registration process uh will be established. And the purpose of this is to not have substandard housing in Los Vanos. I don't think any one of us want that, and we've worked worked hard to clean up some of these properties. So again, uh thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Alex, the staff, and thank you, council, for for making this a priority. In closing, we need to be very aware that Los Vanos is experiencing more requests to annex property into its city limits. The future council will have the unique opportunity, not available to them in over twenty years, to request before annexation. If that is their desire, amenities that will improve the lives of our citizens. We need to be very aware of our infrafo- infrastructure needs to maintain our current quality of life, which include the effective abatement of chromium six, the expansion of our water system, the ability to bring good-paying industrial positions for residents so they do not have to commute out of our community. The furthering of a new hospital and our school system, and finally balancing the cost of residential with the needs of our community, bearing in mind that public safety is one of our top priorities. Now, with these new annexations, again, the council will have the unique ability to then dictate their needs and what they feel is important prior to annexation. You all know now, you're educated enough over the years to know that unless deals are made prior to the property being annexed, you cannot do it post-annexation. So the number of lots that are looking to be annexed, um there were different proposals at times, the community uh amenities fee to help fund the new fire station, um how um how industrial positions can be brought in before we build new homes, and some of the infrastructure, uh including our roadways, how we can tackle those before we increase the population of our community. These are all things that this future council is going to have to deal with. And the way you deal with them will dictate the future of Los Vanos. So I wish you all well. You've done an excellent job. Continue. And please, 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 just be aware of all these situations. It's very time-consuming, but you can do it and you can do it well the way you have done it before. So that kind of ends my presentation, and if there are any questions, I will happy to try and answer those, or staff is available to do so. Mr. Feria, any questions? Or comments?
Nothing. Counted it pretty well.
Thank you, Mr. Feria. Mrs. Santos?
Uh no questions or comments.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Uh no comments. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, and I have nothing else to say because my voice is loo- losing it. So thank you again so much for that, and Alex, thank you for setting this up. And thank you to staff, who I called today, Mark, Stacy, Alex. Uh thank you so much. Sonya, you've been a wonderful help over the years, helping me with the budgets. And uh and I can't thank you all enough for helping me put together uh this presentation. Okay? Let me move my screen here. And let's go on to item fifteen, advisement of public notices. There are no reports tonight. And let's go on to item sixteen, city manager's report.
Uh nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Reportable update on Merced County Association of Governments, M C A G and Measure V Committee. I think I've talked enough. Okay, let's go on to item eighteen, city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Santos.
Um nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Feria?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I have uh no other reports uh other than the Los Vanos, continue what you're doing with COVID nineteen. You're doing a good job. Okay, now let's go on to adjournment. Item A, adjourn to six P M Tuesday, November tenth, uh twenty twenty, to conduct a joint study session with the Planning Commission regarding the complete streets, specific plans, Pioneer Road and State Route one fifty-two, which will be uh let's see here. Which will be held virtually and presented by the city's consultant placeworks. Uh, Mr. Vaughn, do we need to vote on this?
Yes, please.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn to six P M Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty, as read by title?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Mr. Feria, so moved, and do I have a second?
Second, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Emotion by Feria, second by Lewis for the adjournment uh to six P M Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty. Mr. Feria?
Yes.
Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes, carried unanimously. Okay, any other actions before the city council tonight? Alex?
I don't think there's anything else on the agenda.
Okay, I see Mr. Vaughn clicking in. Did you want to say something? All right, he says no. Okay, we won't ask twice. Okay, so with that, I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting at seven forty-one P M. Thank you all. Good night.